So this is a regular Call of Council meeting, City of Roman Forest, Texas. Date is September twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five, and the time is six oh one. Would everyone please stand in the prayer and the pledge?
Evening, everybody. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for another glorious day. We ask tonight's meeting is fruitful for the kingdom of your glory. We ask that everything that we say is committed only for community, and that we can grow this neighborhood into the glorious kingdom for which it deserves. We ask that you look out for our men in blue and our firefighters and paramedics throughout the community. We also ask that everything we say and do tonight edifies your glorious name. In all this, we ask in your heavenly son's name, Jesus Christ, amen.
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 Pledge with the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great state of Texas, honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. Sanders, just in time, sir. It's okay. City administrator just about to take rolls.
Mayor Chris Paul.
I'm here.
Councilmember Mitchell Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Christopher Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Jerry Reeser.
Here.
Councilmember Greg Parton. Councilmember Larry Sanders.
Here.
City Attorney Scott Francis.
Here.
City Engineer Rick Phipps is on his way. Chief of Police Stephen Carlisle. He's absent. City Secretary Mary Campbell's here. City Administrator is here.
You are here, sir. All right, once again, welcome, everyone. Ahead of our public comments tonight, council, I have invited a guest, and it is my pleasure at this time to welcome Mr. Matt Gray. I will present Commissioner to the podium. Commissioner, your host, sir.
Mayor, thank you so much for moving to the front. Really appreciate that. Council, good evening. Good evening to the crowd. I'm Commissioner Matt Gray, Precinct Four. You're Precinct Four County Commissioner. So I worked with Baxter Woodman at their request to come meet with them. I see Kristen and Jackson in the room. And they interviewed me, just like they did so many people in the community. And anyway, we participated, and I'm sorry, can y'all hear me okay without the microphone? Good to hear. And I had saw someone brought to my attention, the community priorities that were released after those meetings, so I thought none better time than this to come in and discuss what we're doing as Precinct Four in Montgomery County that falls in line with what the priorities here that are listed. So we'll get to the map that my team's put up. First of all, thank you to my team that is here. I've got my drainage supervisor. This is Scott over here. Chief of Staff, and Kim, where you at? Kim is our community coordinator. Josh Pascal, the chief of staff, sorry. So anyway, with the priorities, I thought great time to get in and talk about that. Anyway, I'm a lifelong resident. Just real quick to give you some boundaries. Precinct Four is your largest precinct in Montgomery County. We have over a thousand square miles of road, which is roughly two thousand square miles of open ditch that we maintain and mowing, which is quite a bit. It's way more than your precinct one, two, and three. Basically, our boundaries go from Kingwood north to Cleveland, across the Con Road, down to the Woodlands, and you fall San Jacinto River back to Kingwood, and that's basically Precinct Four. Some of the, just to give you a couple of metrics for the last two and a half years since we've been in office, we've had total thirty total subdivision, very great projects completed, and over six hundred thousand feet of linear drainage that we've dug out. So we're pretty proud of that. But I'm gonna backtrack a little bit and go back to these community priorities. I'm gonna read them real quick. Number one was continue to allow for strategic and smart growth of the community with flood mitigation practices in accordance with future land use amount. Have y'all seen this that I'm talking about? Community priorities, can you get a head nod or something? Yeah? No? It was posted, I think, on y'all's Facebook, and it was what was come out of the planning committees. Number two, Roman Forest should work with Montgomery County to prepare drainage study with identified capital improvement projects for the upstream properties in Precinct Two. This is Precinct Four that mitigate flow in Roman Forest and surrounding areas, specifically in the floodplains that surround the community. And idol number eight, establish standards within floodplain that mitigate and protect new developments from property damage and risk during significant storms. These young floodplains. Number ten, new development should be required to mitigate flooding with detention and retention standards, such as including drainage basins, retention zones, pervious surfaces, drainage channels, and storage tanks. As far as number ten, I can tell you right off the bat that no one tells these developers more accountable than I have since I've been in office. So when they go to build, we've created a process. Their first job, before they even get anything signed or approved, is to come in, submit their plans to our Precinct Four office, see how it lines up. We rewrote the drainage criteria manuals, no adverse impact. And I burden them, or challenge them, or task them, whatever, however you wanna say it, is to take water off the neighbors and off the surrounding community, because we're obviously one of the lower parts of Montgomery County in improvementability. That is, that's the challenge that they get once they walk in my door and then walk out. So pretty proud of that. But I'm gonna back up a little bit, and it talks about smart growth with flood mitigation practices, and I'm gonna address number one and number two together. It talks about preparing a drainage study with capital improvement projects and surrounding areas and long-term planning. So I won the Republican primary in two thousand and twenty-two and took office in twenty-three. So after winning the primary, I immediately started reviewing and revising the development regulation standards, drainage criteria manual, and focusing on the floodplain manuals that we have for the county. Number one, the development regulations being my highest priority, because it's one of the things, like I said, that made me run. I was very, we'll be polite and say unsatisfied with how things were going in Montgomery County, especially Precinct Four. And I can tell you what Precinct One, what Precinct Two, what Precinct Three, what previous commissioners. I got in office, after I won the primary, and I started working, and I built an awesome team that represents Precinct Four. We've updated the development regulations. We've updated the drainage criteria manuals. And we were updating and in the process of the floodplain manuals before the tragedy hit out in West Texas. We were already ahead of the curve. And we've got all three of those approved here in two thousand and twenty-five. They took several years on the development regulations and the drainage criteria manuals to get through, to get updated. But the main goal of mine, of my office, is to provide a balance. And I'll tell you the same thing I tell developers. My goal is to protect your investments. My goal is to protect their investments. You buy a home, that's an investment. We don't wanna have flooding in Precinct Four. We don't wanna have bad developments in Precinct Four. So that's why it was pinnacle to work on and get these things updated. So I could cap this meeting off right there and tell you that's a twenty-year plan, because none of those manuals have been updated since the eighties. Nineteen eighty-four on the development regulations, nineteen eighty-nine on the drainage criteria manual. So that well exceeds twenty years. So, and this just changed the face and changed the future of how we develop in Montgomery County, specifically East Montgomery County. But I'll digress a little bit and let you know we do have an actual twenty-year plan as far as the precinct. I don't have a twenty-year plan for Roman Forest. Roman Forest fits into our twenty-year plan, but we do have a twenty-year plan. It started again in two thousand and twenty-two before I even swore in an office. We got an eight hundred thousand dollar grant. That was through FEMA, it's called a scoping grant. And it goes through and identifies projects, and it's on a rolling basis. We've identified fifteen precinct-like projects, and it goes through, and a lot of them have had previous flooding, some kind of FEMA history attached, oftentimes LMI. And it's a lot easier to get the funding and the capital funding from them. And that's how we'll continue to roll those projects. We've had several. We've already been awarded and executed. I had multiple previous commissioners tell me how no one can ever, and would ever be able to drain quarter heights. And it's had water over the streets since I can remember driving back in high school. Well, when it rains now, we don't have water over the streets. We drained it, and we're proud of it. I got another project from Dan Crenshaw that fits into that twenty-year window. We're draining an area over called Tamino on two forty-two. We, like I said, we got the biggest precinct. That's a very low area, LMI area. Worked very closely with the congressman, and we got the funding. That'll be a multi-year project. Very exciting to get that area up to speed. And here's a big one that you guys can be proud of. We started working on that year of grant with the GLO, which is Commissioner Dawn Buckingham. She's your General Land Commissioner for the State of Texas. We got a sixty million dollar grant for Montgomery County. Thirty-six million of that sixty million comes to Precinct Four. It's for a D snag and a cleanout of Peaches Creek, Candy Creek, White Oak Creek, and the east fork of the San Jacinto River. Guess what? Y'all sit right in the middle of all that. So it's gonna clean that out. I don't know if you ever walked down any of those creeks or rivers, but there's about a tree about over ten or fifteen foot laying across it. So I spent a lot of time in it barefoot or on horseback or a three-wheeler through the eighties and nineties when I was growing up. We're very proud of that. Speaking of the scoping grant, I did forget to mention Woodway is identified in that, in one of the fifteen projects that we've got getting scoped out for funding. So I will, I'll fast forward a little bit. You know, we talked about the twenty-year plan. Now let's talk about Roman Forest more specific. So when I got in office, we got, we had each precinct had X amount. I think it was about two and a half million dollars, just under three allocated of federal funding we could use on drainage projects. Well, I pulled a heck of a magic trick, and a couple of the precincts either couldn't spend their money, didn't know how to spend the money, didn't have the horsepower to spend their money, or couldn't figure out how to spend their money. So we were able to acquire that, and we got ten million dollars out of that. And I took those precincts' money, and now we have a total of fifty-three drainage projects in Precinct Four. And out of fifty-three, guess how many allocated and are applying to Roman Forest? Eleven. It's a pretty good percentage. So out of ten million dollars, I'm spending one million dollars of that, one-tenth of the project, out of three hundred and eighteen square miles here in Roman Forest. You guys are a priority to me. This is a priority area, and we're gonna take care of it. I've got a list of those eleven projects. Actually, that's a lot of what's on the map. The one in the three, the one through the three years of what we've completed. We're going into the third year. And then the three to six years, what's projected to come up in the next three to six. And the six to the twenty is what will fall in the scoping piece that we kinda discussed. So we're very proud, we, I'm very proud, and, you know, ecstatic about being able to get that money, bring it back to Precinct Four, and spend it here and get the money out. So what are those drainage projects? Let me give you a little bit more information on that. It's called an outfall project. And an outfall is basically, we'll call it a gully. A gully or a little channel. Sometimes it runs next to your house, or runs through a yard. It's a difference between us and Harris County. Harris County has what you call a flood control district, and they pay very high taxes in that flood control district that manage channels and these big waterways that help move the water out. It don't always work, as we've seen, but that's how it works. We don't have that. We don't have the extra tax base to manage those like that. But we did get this one-time gift, and so we're opening it up. I invested in some equipment to go back and maintain it after we do it. But those outfalls are basically what drains neighborhoods and subdivisions and certain areas. So sometimes they go through, and a lot of times private property. So we gotta work with landowners. We gotta make sure and manage it, that it's not getting filled in, because that's where, when you see somebody do move in or something happen, you'll see them bringing dirt in. And that's where you see water build up, and it creates a choke point. And that's one of the constant challenges of my office and what we deal with with drainage in the area. But that's why we have such a close relationship with the new developers and developers coming in, because just to be frank, we drop the hammer on them if there's an issue, or they're not complying, or whatever the case is. So we gotta keep that water getting out of here. And normally, we've had great, great success with it, delve it in and meter it out. But that's a little bit of backstory and a little education on what an outfall is. It's nothing simple, it's just, it's where the water goes. I've got a list. The council will have a list of those eleven projects and their locations. They will start. We've got it scheduled out for the end of October, maybe November when it starts. Don't hold me now to a specific date. They'll probably start one to two, and then when we get all through, it's mobilized here, working three at a time, and just kinda work through until they get those complete. That's the plan on the outfall projects. Other than that, you know, we're pretty happy. Y'all got good drainage here in Roman Forest. I know you've got some issues. I heard a little snicker there, but I wasn't finished what I was saying. Roman Forest, the state's towards the back, which is flatter than a Dr. Pepper can on the nightstand. So the water has a hard time getting out of there. But we're focusing a lot of energy. We've spent a lot of energy and money on tram road where that water goes. I wish we could just rip a channel all the way back to Precinct Four. It's really not that far back there. But in the meantime, we're trying to manage the outfalls to get that water out and get the water where it needs to go, and do our due diligence and do right by y'all. So other than that, I don't have anything else to add on drainage. I did, I was poked and said, you know, maybe you mentioned some of the mobility stuff we've worked on. Last year, I think it was year before, we worked on the boulevard. We did a lot of repaving there on Roman Forest. I've applied for the bridge elevation grants over Peach Creek. We didn't get it, and I think they had applied for it before, before I got in office as well. We've got a really good relationship with Dan Crenshaw's office. They do a lot of federal appropriations for us, and I'm pretty, I feel pretty good about it. If we have them around, if he sticks around, we'll be able to get something like that. So I'd really like to see that bridge get through. There was a thing called pass-through funding. Basically, it was when Montgomery County had the toll road on two forty-two, and it was a big political hoopla, and it was told and not told, and a deal with Text Dot. So basically, with the money they had and the interest that had accrued, there was fifty-eight million dollars that no one could agree on to get off of, get out of purgatory and get it done. Anyway, it was one of my main missions that first year. I only aged about ten years getting that pass through and it freed up, but I did get it freed up. And with it, we're getting on and off ramps in Valley Ranch, and we're paying through out of that money. And we're also, I applied ten million of it for design and engineering for two thousand and ninety, and the realigning right there at Spandora. So it doesn't directly affect y'all right here, but some of you go out the backside of the neighborhood and go out through there. And so we're hoping to improve that. That is not going to be a fast fix, because it's through the state. And then you've got the ninety-nine access through King's Colony and Third Peach Creek right there. We're currently looking at where Galaxy runs across, what is that? Is that Deer Run?
Deer Run.
Deer Run that runs into Coach Light. So we're planning on, we gotta work on some drainage on Coach Light. So before we do a road project, we go in and fix the drainage. Otherwise, it's a waste of your tax money and my time, because the road's gonna wash out underneath the foundations. So we're gonna put a new road into Coach Light, and we're working with a new development right there. And there's already a stopgap at ninety-nine, which would give y'all a cut through directly to ninety-nine. So ultimately, hoping traffic gets better if you go towards Spandora or go towards ninety-nine. That is all I've got. So a little over twenty minutes, around twenty minutes. Hope I didn't bore y'all too much, but I thought you deserved to know, you need to deserve, how I'm utilizing your tax dollars, how I'm trying to get the most out of your tax dollars. And I think we're making it happen. So I don't know, are we taking questions?
Do you have time for questions?
I'll fill up the questions if you got it. Yes, sir.
All right.
Not so much your questions, just a thank you. I have been recording the boulevards, the weeds that were ten foot tall. I appreciate you guys getting to it, getting the mow. It looks a lot better. I did however, reached back out today, because that contractor, I know you used your contractor. But when the county used to do it, they get the fad in the sky. They weed it down in the ditch, they weed it up to the bridge, to the guardrails. They took care of everything. This guy, it took him three hours, he was a whole boulevard, he never got off his mower. So, you know, if you can look at Idaho contract all four, maybe it just says mow.
Yeah.
But, you know, it just looked so exciting when you come up and cross that bridge in the Roman Forest. You see all those vines on the, on guardrails and grown up there. So if there's anything you can do on that, thank you, I appreciate everything you're doing for us.
And it's funny, I always laugh at the team, and I'll make this comment. If you judge, or if anyone judges my performance based on mowing or mosquitoes, you will always be disappointed. I will disappoint you every time. But if you look at the grant funding and the federal funding that we bring back to Montgomery, East Montgomery County, if you look at the drainage that we conduct and get done and the roads, we're hitting home runs. We're getting on base and getting home, around the home every time. We've applied for over a hundred and twenty million dollars, probably close to a hundred and thirty million right now. In under three years, we've been awarded over sixty million dollars, closer to seventy. That just doesn't happen. I don't even think anyone else in the county's ever done it. So those are the things that I grade my team and myself on. I do want to, we do need to look at, you know, somehow more mowing. But like I said, we got two thousand miles that we manage, and it's kind of, it's been a wet summer. But I hear you loud and clear.
But it did take you seven months to get mowed.
I get, I get beat down every summer. Anyway, anyone else? Yes, sir?
The person you replaced, the previous commissioner, he thought it was a bright idea to plant these gobs of trees up and down the freeway here. Once they got a, kind of run a little bit, you know, the first thing I noticed was that all that was catching trash, you know, it's a trash collection. And then it's hard for the county to mow, mow all that. And it didn't get mowed very often because of those trees. And then it seemed like to me, that's a waste of taxidermy. Plus, you know, what happened in the drought we had, you know, a bunch of them died off. It's our tax money getting died off out there because they, they could have reviewed flying the expressway.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, I don't have nothing against a few trees planting, you know, a few yards apart. But when you start planting oaks and pine trees two feet apart, it just didn't make sense to me. And I was just like, personally, I would like to have, I just don't wanna see more of our tax money. I don't know if anybody else would agree with me going toward that kind of, you know, planting that, you know, that many trees in a small area.
I can appreciate that, and I will go to bat for my predecessor. And just to clarify, that's the, that's Text Dot and the National Highway Association. Anyway, that's not actually county maintained. That was the state that did that and planted all that, so spare him on that one.
Well, I was thinking it's him, but it's, you know, it seemed like in our area right up here.
No, I understand, but it actually, that actually wasn't, and the state does weird stuff. I get chastised, because on thirteen fourteen, they went and put all these lights, all the way down thirteen fourteen, and they never turned them on. And they call my office all the time, they call me, well, when are you gonna turn these lights on? These idiots who built these lights and won't even, don't even have any power at all.
They made it on channel two.
Oh, did it? It made the news? I didn't even realize that.
Oh, yeah, I saw it when I came up.
Well, Text Dot put those in, and they were part of the, one of the packages that went through in the last presidential term anyway. Because I asked Text Dot, I was a little, I was new to it as well. I'm like, guys, I could really use a drainage project, or put the money towards design, or make the road better. And it was only allotted to certain things, and the lighting was what it did. So it's, you know, being in the county, we feel, what I have learned is we take the heat for all the trips and slips and falls of the state, and everybody else does. Mr. Hyam, I see you.
Hey, I was curious about the columns. My position here, I feel like we are just being tore down and gone, because they're all a liesore. So that's just my opinion, so.
Well.
I hope you guys can get together and figure that out.
I appreciate that, and I'll tell y'all my opinion, and I'll tell your council my opinion. When your council makes a vote on it, whatever y'all tell me to do and this neighborhood tells me to do, we'll do it. But until then, I'm not doing anything, because I think this neighborhood's probably about fifty-fifty on the columns. And I don't, right or wrong or indifferent, once I get the marching orders, I'll do it. But until then, you know, it's Roman Forest's columns.
Yeah, I told you, he wasn't gonna do anything to them until we give him the okay.
Yes, sir.
I was just moved here about three years ago, and that's a landmark that I've seen growing up when I was a kid. In my opinion, speaking on the landmark, I thought they were the county's responsibility and not the city. And another project that I did think, well, had a chance to have a city that talked to them, is why don't we, with, working with the county, why don't we take it upon ourselves to maybe power wash it, go in that space where the water fills in with cement, paint it, power wash the pillars, paint them white. You know, if they last another twenty years, so be it. I mean, if we, if the county isn't willing to spend the money, maybe we could raise some funds and get them painted that way.
I'll tell you this, like I just described about the money that I allotted, which is more than I allotted for any other specific area in Precinct Four. And I've partnered up with your police chief on SWAT cameras. I don't have that same agreement anywhere else. We would probably commit to a one-time to help you do it, but I would have to put this back on you and tell you that it was an HOA or some city accountability there, if you wanna make them do that and keep them. But, you know, there's just not the bandwidth. I run a very tight shift. There was over eighty employees when I got here. We hired number sixty-four the other day. And we run about as lean as you can run, and we're about as effective as any precinct in the state of Texas, and I've put my drainage team against anybody in the state of Texas. And we get that, because we stay on task. So like I said, we would entertain a one-time on it, but, you know, ultimately, y'all are gonna have to make the decision.
Maybe put it before the residents, let them decide, and that'd be the best way.
Mayor, I have taken up thirty minutes. I have taken questions. I sincerely appreciate the council giving me this time. I appreciate y'all, and I don't have anything further to share, so thank y'all very much. I know y'all've got a lot more to get through.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. I can remember everything about drainage and everything else, but I forget my team's name that I spend every day, but I'm sorry. Just got there. Have a good night.
Night, sir. Council moving on to item six, which is public comments. We have Mr. Cooper. Tommy, you're up for it.
Thanks, Mayor. My name's Tommy Cooper, 25, 23 Roman Forest Boulevard down here. Scott's concerned about community standards. Since COVID, I've seen some big move in here that really don't hold the standards that, that most of us, you know, that's why I moved here in 2005, because 2005 is about the most decent neighborhood in the whole area. I was raised here in New Canaan. But there's a resident that you can see his backyard off Boulevard on Martha Line. He's running some sort of a salvage operation from what I understand. He buys boats and cars, fixes them up. So you can see that from the boulevard. From back of his house to the back of his property, there might be three or four cars scattered across there. It's an isolate. And I just don't, don't like it. And then we got somebody down here, 230 block Roman Forest Boulevard, Seeger, that is just lazy. And there's a lot of people living in that house, and I've seen them, but they just don't maintain their yard and create an isolate for the community. So I just wanted to bring that up to the city. And I know recently there was somebody that had a problem on one of these backstreets here. Somebody, but overflowed the garage. It was overflowing into the driveway of the city. I guess we contacted them, had something done and they cleaned it up. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. Because I, I got concerns about people. There, we got a lot of property in here that easily sell well above a half million dollars. And I guarantee you there are people driving in here to look at a house that's for sale over a half million dollars. And they see those kind of standards and they're gonna refrain from buying here. And that's what concerns me about my home. Because, you know, I'm kind of looking elsewhere, I'm not sure. But I don't want people to drive in and look at my home if it's up for sale, which is gonna be around a half million dollar mark or thereabouts, maybe a little less. But, and see these unkept yards and, you know, cars scattered in somebody's backyard, knowing that if they were buying here, that that could end up next door to them. So I think, you know, it's, I would like for the city, you know, to look into what they could possibly do to maybe motivate these people. You know, there's some people who just put up privacy against it and saw everything and just probably wouldn't be seen. But, and keeping up the front yard goes a long ways. And that's all I got to say. I appreciate this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Phil still out there waiting for him?
He's talking.
You can come in. Come on in. I gotta get him in here. He might try to get away. Next up, Ms. Stewart, Linda, your offer.
As short as I am, I'm hoping that I can use my schoolteacher voice and not need to worry about the microphone. What I'd like to do is just motivate people. It's not a major election year, but we have important elections for us. And that the last day to register to vote is Monday, October 6th. And those of you that need to register to vote, I picked up some voter registration cards. And I'm gonna leave them here on the entry table, that you can pick them up. Or if you need help registering to vote, getting up to do that, then I am in contact. We have a voter registrar here in Roman Forest and see that if you want to vote, we'll make sure you have the ability to do that. Our early voting will start on Monday, October 20th through Friday, October 31st. And it's important to know that early voting will be at Bull Solace Park at the Fairgrounds building. But our voting on November 4th will not be there. You'll need to go to Woodbridge City Hall anytime between 7:00 in the morning and 7:00 in the evening on Wood Branch Drive out there by Railroad Avenue. So early voting at the Fairgrounds, regular voting at Wood Branch City Hall. But the other thing that I'm not sure that there'll be an issue coming up about the purchase of a truck for the maintenance department. And I'm not sure if many people know that for over 35 years, I was crew chief on a professional race team. So during that 40, almost 40 years, I can't begin to say exactly how many trucks of various sizes and needs we've purchased over the years. And I just want to give a caution about buying a used work truck. Because as the word implies, it was a work truck. So we have no idea how it was worked, what it was used for. And if it was such a good work truck, why did they trade it back in? The other caution is, like being from Florida, the flooding and the hurricanes, that there is no way of knowing if that used truck ever sat in water for any short or long period of time. The other thing about a used truck is, all it would take is, we wanted to haul our excavator and the trailer. Would be one issue with transmission or rear end or anything requiring repair that's not in the budget. And also for a work truck requiring regular service, we haven't put service of that truck in the budget. So when we look at purchasing a truck, one, we need to consider the weight of that excavator and trailer because that would be the major, one of the major jobs I would think of hauling that equipment around. So the towing capacity, we be sure and look at, how much is the difference between a three-quarter and a one-ton truck? Because sometimes the difference between that is not a whole lot. But also as crew chief, there were continued efforts and negotiations for needed motor parts and vehicles to haul the race equipment. Over 35 years, I've told you, we've had many different trucks from 1500s to 550s to big international motors to pull whatever our race needs were. We were constantly working for the best deal on these trucks. Businesses liked it when they could do internal bookkeeping rather than shallow cash. And they always wanted to feel like they weren't really losing money on the deal and always wanted to know what was in it for them. So whoever's dealing with the various dealerships need to bother for our best needs in their no-frills, heavy-duty work truck and offering to let the community know who served us best. Without being rude or burning bridges, you can share the competition's offers with each other. Most new vehicles that you get now come with a two-years free service. This should be included in the contract. When seeking sponsors in racing, professional racers know, any signage or stickers on the truck, on the race vehicle, means that they got something in return, a sponsorship. Only non-professionals who put the stickers on their trucks to make it look good. Real racers know, no stickers going on there unless we got something for it. So my suggestion is, when we put together a deal, we offer to put a dealer-designed decal on the rear tailgate of the truck saying where we got the best deal and who is servicing our truck. When I got my new car, the dealership gave me a referral card. When I gave it to someone and they went down to the dealership and test rode, we both got $50. That referral was worth $100. The decal could include a referral statement that when we earned it, that we could earn an additional service for the truck if they mentioned seeing the information on the back of the truck riding around town. It was mentioned that the new truck would outlast the initial warranty period. Well, when you go to get a new truck and we want this long-term for us, the extended warranty should be, it should include an extended warranty, which is something that the dealers do internally and sell themselves. So it's something you can work into the contract. And because you can negotiate the price for those extended warranties, I would suggest not ever paying over $3,000 on a truck for it. Between including service and warranty, this new no-frills work truck should still leave some money left over in that budget, in that reimbursement money that's sitting, that won't affect any budgets. Because we'll have warranty and service contract, we don't have to add that into budgets for a used truck in years to come. So. So that might even give us some money to, it shouldn't use it all, and that should still give us some money to help the parks or special projects and save us money in future budgets, allow the maintenance to be more efficient and complete needed projects. So as my husband used to say, on new trucks versus used trucks, honey, this would be the last truck we ever have to buy if we service and keep the property. Well, I hope that's long-term for us here in Roman Forest. And of course, that's only until the next need comes due. So, thank you.
Mr. Hitt, you're up next, sir.
Good afternoon or evening. Thank you for allowing me to get up here and stand again. I think this is four, maybe five meetings I've attended. And it's again the same thing. It's the tall grass, the high weeds, the people that don't maintain their yards, the code enforcement not being pro activism, as I think they should be. And so what I'd like to say first, or ask first, is I had noticed that the vacant undeveloped lots I've been complaining about since April, I didn't have to complain this month. They got mowed on my street. So is that something that we decided or made a decision on?
He took care of it.
Yeah, so taking care of it is, we just gonna do it just one time and then I gotta start this process next year?
I think, and he could probably speak to the schedule of the maintenance department better than I can.
But is, is the city gonna start mowing those undeveloped blocks, the right-of-ways in front of those on a regular basis now?
We're gonna mow them, but probably not as often as we would like.
On a regular basis.
But until it gets to the 12 inches now, right?
As often as we can.
Okay. So I got nowhere, I guess. Anyway, I appreciate it.
No, you did get somewhere. You come up here and you talk, but you say what you want to say. Now let me talk back. You asked me a question, so I'm gonna answer it. Yes, we are gonna mow. And we're gonna mow it as often as we can. We're down a guy right now. We were down a mower, but we're not down a mower anymore. So we were able to get out and do those things.
And, and I appreciate that. But at, at the same time, whenever I, that's the, you know, I, I get no, I get no two-way conversation here. I would have thought that somebody would have said, Mr. Hitt, man, thank you for coming. We're gonna do the best we can. Here's what we're gonna do. Everybody's got my email and got my phone number and heard nothing. So I had no idea what's going on or what the city's gonna do. All I know is I did not have to submit a code violation. Well, I did submit one. It's in August. But then this last time, they came around and mowed a week ago, I think it was, two weeks ago, and I didn't have to submit one. So I appreciate the effort that you made. I'm just trying to find out, is this something I gotta look forward to every year or every time it gets above 12 inches? So that's all I'm trying to say.
I would say that it was done to, to take care of the problem. And we took care of the problem now. Will, will I be able, or will we be able to react as quickly next time? I don't know. Depends on the circumstances. Depends on if we're down a maintenance person. It depends on what the weather's doing. Depends on how fast the grass is growing. There's a lot of ifs, a lot of verbals.
And I understand. But again, my point, when I first started this endeavor to get these right-of-ways mowed, I was told it's the, it's that property owner's responsibility. So my question to the chief, and he's not here, and to Scott when we, when I came in and talked to us, is there, do we have an action plan? Okay? Have we sent those letters out to those property owners? And I can probably tell you, they're not all of them. So let's start that this winter. Let's send those letters out. I, you might get every one of those property owners to start mowing the front of the right-of-ways on these undeveloped lots. You might, I said. Okay? Like, that's a start. That's a, that's the action plan. You've gotta have somewhere to start. And if you don't, then we're gonna be in the same position next April. Okay, so that's all I'll go on that. Now, I'd like to, I got a problem. What I'm, what I'm fighting now is, like the gentleman said, we've got some homeowners where they have a house built on this lot that they don't mow their yard until they're told. Again, that's taking time away from your code enforcement. They could be doing other things. 12 inches. So that would be from here to the top. I don't think that's, no, we should never have agreed to 12 inches is when we had to tell these people they need to mow their yard.
What has it grew to now?
I know. And that's outrageous.
They have to live with that until there's a change.
But these people are the ones that can make that change. So here's what I'm, here's, if you don't want to pass this. I've got two neighbors. They mow their yard when they're told. That's ridiculous. I've turned in code violations this month, two of them already, and it's still not taken care of. So again, on these, on these code violations, are we talking to the customer, to these homeowners? What are their excuses? They shouldn't have a good excuse. I'd like to see two things. Like somebody on council to look at this and have some discussions. Let's drop that down to eight inches. I think eight inches, even eight inches. Do you let your grass grow eight inches before you mow it? Come on. The other thing I'd like to see is, there is no recourse for repeat offenders.
Yes, we have had the discussion. We are replying to that issue.
Perfect. Because I can tell you, I do this, it's every year for these neighbors. And, and one of them has been reported five times. He's mowed his yard twice this summer. How many of you have mowed yours twice? So that's, that's my ask. Let's look, look at this eight inches versus 12 inches. And on the fourth time you have to be told in a 12-month calendar year that you gotta mow your yard, it should be an automatic citation. Just automatic. Give it to them. So that's what I wanted to speak on. I appreciate your time. And I'm sorry, Scott, if I came on across a little strong, but, you know, I've been, I've been do, I've been here since April, the first council meeting. This is taking way too long. And then when a decision's made, or that you're gonna do something, I don't know about that. Nobody tells me.
I didn't want to check in with you.
Well, no, you're not.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm done. I see where that goes.
Thank you.
You bet. Over.
Okay, Ernie Miller. You are up next, sir.
Well, I'd like to say good evening and thank you for a long week's speaking. I unfortunately have praised the, to give out tonight. And that is to our code enforcement for following through something and to our chief, who also has followed. But I do have one thing, like this gentleman had said earlier. We have homes now that are upwards of a half million dollars. We have new people that are moving in. They're expecting a certain lifestyle. The lifestyle we live in is back when homes were 50,000 or 80,000 when they first moved in. There are older people who live here and I understand those things. But what happens is, I've been dealing, he's already brought it up, and I'm sure you guys already know, across the street from my house, this has been going on since January of this year. I think the ordinance needs to be addressed so that it doesn't drag out for nine or 10 months. Because what's gonna end up happening is probably gonna happen in the next few days. They will go ahead and go back to the drawing board and start it all over again. And I'll be doing, just like everybody else here, going through this process again for eight or nine months. So what I would like is this, maybe we address these ordinances and make them a little bit shorter so that they're taken care of. and make them a little bit shorter so that they're taken care of at a reasonable amount of time. I don't think something should take nine months to come to a solution. And, you know, and believe me, I'm gonna sit here and I'm gonna tell everybody here, if it wasn't for the chief and it wasn't for code enforcement, this could be still happening right now. A lot of people think something's not happening. You know, code enforcement and the chief and everybody, it's not supposed to happen overnight. So don't expect it to happen overnight. I don't. But nine months is not overnight. And that's, that's basically what I, what I think, you know, I'd like you guys to address. Is maybe address those things in the ordinances so it doesn't drag out for nine months. So people like this gentleman and I don't have to live with this eyesore for that long. I don't think I'm asking a lot. I'm just asking to look at this and maybe address this. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. We have Mr. David Mullane. You are up, sir.
Hello, council. Hello, audience. My name's David Mullane. I'm not doing great, and I will keep it under three things. So first, I just wanna say thank y'all for mowing. Those bitches look great. I have a lot more confidence in the graders now. I think that's a plus for everybody in this city. So once again, thank y'all for doing that. That's a big help, especially during hurricane season. Second, I would just like to let everybody know I'm running for city council in the next coming election. And so I'll be on your ballot. I've been living out here for over thirty years. I've been prior council member for over nine and a half. I think I can offer a lot, bring the table. I know the common procedure. I know the ordinance very, very well. I know the state law, how the government's work, how the city's work. I think we, I believe, I believe in the common sense approach to growth. I'm pro police for small government. I'm also proactive, or, I believe in smart financial management of your taxpayer's dollars. I said, I've been doing this, y'all, for a while. I believe in transparency. I was the first one to start recording your meetings twelve years ago and putting them on the internet. We remember that. And so I would like you to serve me. When you're making your reflection of the home, I think that should be a great asset. I also believe in keeping your home values up. And I think that's our, one of our biggest investments in our portfolio, our homes. It's where we come home every day, which we raise our family. And I believe in strong code enforcement, ordinance enforcements. And I just wanna serve you like you allowed me to do before. And I think I'm gonna be a great asset to you and your families and your property values. So thank you. Thank you, council, for mowing. Don't forget to vote. Over to the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, David. You got my vote.
Thanks, sir.
All right, council. That was the last public speaker that we had tonight. So at this time, council, we'll do something a little different. Instead of moving on to item seven, I'm gonna go ahead and jump ahead to item eleven. Let's go to page two, item eleven, discuss and consider possible action concerning accepting the terms of the 2024 annual audit of a city's financial records. So I would welcome Brooks Watson Company to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you today. Each of you should have a balanced report. In that, I've got a presentation I'm gonna go through over the audit. We audited the year ended September 30, 2024. My name is John Watson. I work for the audit company, Brooks Watson Company, and here to present that audit to you. You open the report. Click over to the audit process. Audit was conducted consistently with U.S. GAAP, as generally accepted audit standards. It's a three-phase approach. First phase is planning. It's where we look at results for the current year, compare them to our expectations, and try to focus on areas we find most susceptible. Mr. Mayor brought the presentation here on the screen. Click to the next page. Yes, right there. Fieldwork is the second stage of the audit. That's where we draw samples, vouch of samples to underline evidence. And I've got the grant near. And confirm balances with third parties. Where there are differences, we determine as to why, and we propose audit adjustments. That's the conclusion of reporting phase. So we prepared that audit report. You all have it in front of you, as well as a lot of letters. So that is the U.S. GAAP audit. The report has four sections. The first section is the audit opinion. So that's a letter from us. Your intended auditor describes whether the financial statements are consistent with U.S. GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, or are there any modifications? Management's discussion and analysis follows that, compares current year results to prior year, explains significant changes year over year. Your basic financial statements are presented after that. They're presented on two different bases of accounting. Your government-wide statements, which has all your long-term assets and long-term liabilities. Fund-level statements, which are presented on a more near-term basis, called modified accrual accounting. Notes to the financial statements follow that. It's got a lot of details about the results for the year. And then in the back of your report, you've got some required supplementary information, which is like the actual schedules. We'll look at that for the general fund on a slide to come. I mentioned the audit opinion. There's four types of audit opinions you can receive, and those are listed here, color-coded. The city received an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance it can provide. So that is a good thing. That means there's no material errors or inconsideracies within this report or where, grateful to the city, management, we gave us everything we need to form that opinion. Thank you. Financial highlights. So again, keep in mind, this is as of September 30, 24. So the activities for the year ended the same. Total assets exceeded total liabilities by about three twenty-eight million. City had an overall decrease within your net position during the year of about ninety-six thousand. Governmental funds reported a combined ending fund balance at year-end of about seven hundred seventy-five thousand, which was a decrease of about thirty-three thousand. Unassigned fund balance within your general fund was six hundred fifteen thousand four hundred twenty-six. That is twenty-seven percent of your total expenditures for the year. That's approximately three months of reserve. So the GFOA, Government Climate Officers Association, which is the body we live to for guidance, they recommend having at least two months' reserve. So you're sitting with three months, so you're sitting in good shape there. This is a pie chart of your revenues. So total governmental revenues in the current year ended September 30, 24, were two million four hundred eighty-five thousand two seventy-eight. Prior year, it was around two point two million. Property taxes make up fifty-five percent of that, about one million three hundred sixty-eight thousand. Prior year, it was less, one million one hundred eighty-five thousand. Charges for services made up fifteen percent, about three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Prior year, before that, it was three hundred and sixty-six thousand. Grants and contributions were one percent at twenty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-four. Prior year, it was sixty thousand three hundred fifty-one. Those are the revenue side, so here's a look at the expense side allocation. Governmental expenses in the current year were two million five hundred eighty-two thousand. Approximately prior year, it was about two million seventy-nine thousand. Your largest expenses, police department makes up forty-one percent, one million forty-six thousand eight seventy-four. Prior year, it was seven hundred sixty-six thousand seventy-two. General government makes up nineteen percent, four hundred ninety thousand one hundred twenty-eight. Prior year, it was four hundred ninety-eight thousand two fifty-four. Public works makes up thirty percent, seven hundred sixty-eight thousand forty-four. Prior year, it was five hundred seventy-five thousand four hundred four. Interest in fiscal charges made up three percent, eighty thousand seven hundred sixty-two. Prior year, it was a little higher, around ninety-three thousand. Oh, sorry. I'll click over to that here. Okay, so that was a look at the government-wide. This is more granular look by fund. Right here, we've got your general fund. That's where the majority of your taxes and expenses occur. Got the debt service fund to the right of that, and then a combination of all the other special revenue funds to the right of that. Just starting, some red marks here, which are your revenues less expenditures. What is that net? So general fund had a positive increase there of sixty-one thousand seven hundred eighty-four. That's circled in red, so that's feeding into that positive reserve there that I mentioned around three months. Debt service fund has a small surplus, which is consistent with our expectations for this fund. Then you have some other funds that had a deficit. Those were primarily some special revenue funds that had higher, obviously higher expenditures than revenues. Put it right there. Okay, so this here is a summary of your budget actual scheduled for the general fund. So in the left column is your final budget. So that would include your original budget and any budget amendments passed. In the middle column is the actual results, and in the right column is your variance between budget and actual. So we can see the net final budget there, a small deficit of thirty-four thousand eight hundred thirty-seven. That's circled there in the bottom left. Actual came in over that, so a positive variance overall, and we can see as to why. Right column, revenues were under budget by about one hundred eighty-four thousand. Grants and contributions were under the budget primarily. Total expenditures were also under budget, so that's a favorable budget variance of one hundred forty-five thousand three hundred forty-six. And the combination of those and some other financing sources fed to a positive overall budget variance of ninety-six thousand six hundred twenty-one. That's everything I wanted to share. In addition to that, there's a couple of letters that y'all have, and that's stacked within that report. Standard communications within those letters, very independent. Don't have any relationships with the city outside of this contract. Audit adjustments are listed within those letters, so all the adjustments we proposed to get the financial statements consistent with U.S. GAAP, those are listed there, as well as some observations over internal controls. So we always do walkthroughs of various areas for the cities, for your city. Try to determine areas of potential weakness and make suggestions for improvement. So those are, those are listed within those letters. That's everything I wanted to share, so if you have any questions, happy to address them at this time. Thank you.
Council, any questions or just a motion?
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to page five, please, on your financial reports? The second and third items? That the city had an overall decrease in net position of ninety-six thousand six hundred five dollars. Can you explain that line out and the line out below it?
Yep. Yeah, so let me flip to it within the report, and then I'll give you an explanation. Yeah, so on page twenty and twenty-one of your balanced report, you'll see the change in net position of negative ninety-six thousand six hundred five, as cited here. So your net position, which is just your assets less liabilities, decreased, so it weakened by that amount. The third bullet, city's governmental funds reported a combined ending fund balance of seven hundred seventy-five thousand ninety-nine, which was a decrease of thirty-two thousand eight hundred seventy-three. If you recall, I went over, your report is presented on two different bases of accounting. I don't think I gave enough details about that. So the statement of net position is presented on full accrual basis of accounting. The big difference with the other report, which are fund balances, is that's presented on modified accrual accounting, so literally looking at it under two different lenses. The full accrual method records all long-term debt. So all long-term debt is captured on your statement of net position. Your capital assets, all the various streets and all the improvements, vehicles, et cetera, those are capitalized on your statement of net position. So that look, the statement of net position and the statement of activities, which relates to bullet two, is a full accrual look. It includes long-term assets and long-term liabilities. The other look, which is modified accrual, which looks at fund balance, it does not, when you acquire, let's say you acquire a new truck, as was spoken about earlier, that's expense. So it's literally treating things differently. Long-term assets and long-term liabilities, for the most part, don't exist on modified accrual accounting. That's why those two, those two items differ. One is considered more of a near-term look, where we're expensing these capital additions, as an example. The other is considered a more long-term look, where we capitalize all these additions onto our balance sheet. So that's the reason for the difference. You could literally look at the statement of net position and the balance sheet, and they're sort of presenting the same terms. They're both assets, liabilities. But it's just that one includes long-term assets and liabilities, the other does not. It only includes more liquid assets. And then if it has near-term liabilities, it doesn't include long-term debt. So those are the reasons that you see those differences. And you will see that, by the way, on every city, so you can see that, those two different presentations. So definitely good not to just take my word. You could look at any of your neighboring cities or any Texas city, and you're gonna see statement of net position, which again is basically a balance sheet to lay in. And then you can literally see a balance sheet, and they don't match, because they're looking at them differently.
So despite the decrease in the net position, the overall general fund increased by nearly sixty-two thousand. So we have more reserve, more saving, despite the decrease in the net position.
That's right. And one big difference is in the statement of net position, one significant expense on full accrual accounting is depreciation. So we may have streets that are worth millions of dollars that were depreciated in over, say, fifty years, and that's a significant book expense, an expense that gets captured in that. But when we look at the general fund, which is applying a different basis of accounting, there is zero depreciation, because everything is expensive when it was bought. So that street, it was purchased, it was constructed fifty years ago. Those costs were expensive then, so that cost is not, you're not deemed for it now. So you can't have increases in the general fund, but still have a weakening overall net position of the city.
I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yep.
Page thirteen, the handout book, shows the police department at seven percent, and public works at thirty-three. And the paper handout, page seven, shows the police department forty-one percent, and public works at thirty. Which one is correct?
Yeah. That's, I appreciate you pointing that out, and I wasn't aware of that difference. So I would have to check into that. My hope is the book, and I'll be happy to check into that in the morning. And if the book isn't correct, we will get corrected.
Okay.
I really appreciate you pointing that out. A lot of our, for better or worse, and this is not a, the reality is, is those should be consistent, and I think, and I appreciate you pointing it out. There's, everything we do, like most companies, it's, things are linked, because it would take so long to update so many numbers within that report. Sometimes changes happen, and that linking doesn't flow through. And that would be my guess as to why that happened, but it doesn't make it right. But, but the book is the one that we have to get right, so I'll check into that. Before we issue that, we'll make sure that it's correct.
The revenues are the same. You have percentage difference in that, too.
Okay, absolutely. I'll check into that. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions, council? All right. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Council, do we want to go ahead and take action to accept? Where y'all wanna go?
I just make one quick comment, Mayor. Can I? If you do wanna make any motions, if you may be subject to this potential change, happy to, like I said, happy to get back to you tomorrow morning on that. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Mayor, I know we have a change, approved of the items. If we approve this record, is it gonna be approved with the fact that he's gonna change it to the correct percentage?
He's gonna confirm, he's gonna confirm that what's in the bound book is the correct number, and change don't give me.
Okay, I'm making a motion to accept the 2024 budget as given to us for the corporate changes.
Okay, motion on the floor. Councilman Sanders to accept the audit report for our 2024 finances, with the exception that Mr. Watson is looking into making sure the correct information is in the bound book. Does that work, Mr. Rinsen?
Audit, not question.
Audit, audit.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Reese, for seconds. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
All in favor of accepting with that one term? One, two, three, four, as you know.
Question. Mr. Watson?
Sure.
This particular audit seemed to take an unusually long amount of time to get to us, so we're in the process of approving. We've already approved the next year's budget before we had the audit on this one. How do we improve that timeline for next year?
Yeah, I, so...
We should be waiting a year for the audit.
Shouldn't, shouldn't, right. And if you recall, it was the previous audit that really put a backlog, twenty-three, and you had significant turnover in personnel. So, so in audit, we make requests to test that information. I went over that very briefly, but if we don't get the information to audit, all we can do is keep requesting, and so once the, once the information was furnished with us, we were able to complete it, but what that did, that delay in the twenty-three audit pushed everything back. We issued that in March of twenty-five, and then, so now, we're issuing, obviously, this one, about six months later, possibly whatever that is. So there's no reason we should be this far back, I think. So at this point, you are caught up, you're caught up with, you know, September thirty, twenty-five is about to end, so you will get back in our regular, what we call busy season schedule, and that's, that's kind of the answer to it.
But we should expect, take three months for the next turnaround to get back on a regular course?
So, so three months from year-end? So, so, no, that's, so the deadline is six months, and historically, and I would have to speak to them, but if they could, if they could get it closed within a month after year end, that would be the quickest. The Roman Forest, that never closed, is, so I don't want to make promises that maybe, you know, are, but I think six months is a reasonable timeframe. That's a statutory timeframe, so. But, yeah, I mean, we could, we could schedule it earlier, but it's really going to come down to getting it closed and then furnishing on a request timely. The current group, I think, has done a good job, is that all the information related to prior, prior folks, so they were, you know, scrambling to get it all together and ultimately get it done. Now, now that I assume a little more continuity for this year, I expect the turnaround time to be faster. That's my expectation. Three months, so by December thirty-first is pretty aggressive. There's a...
So six months at the latest, three months would be aggressive?
Three months would be very aggressive.
Motion?
Yes.
But nothing longer than six months?
I think six months, yeah, six months would be ideal. And then we'll come out, we'll have schedules, and they'll be very specific, deliverable dates, in both sides, as long as we're, you know, making sure it's reasonable. Yeah, that would, that would be well within reason. So, so, yeah. So March thirty-first.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all, appreciate it.
All right. Wanting to stay on the current track here. Counsel, we're going to move to item twelve. This is Baxter and Woodman, presentation of the 2025 comprehensive plan.
Hey, Mayor, Council. I want to first appreciate, listen, it's an appreciation sheet for all the comments we received from the public and from you. And we're going to attempt to walk you through the presentation, highlight the highlights of the project that we did in the last year with the Roman Forest community.
I don't have, I don't have...
Oh, you don't? Oh, was it, is that it? Yeah. Yeah, I have a, I'm watching.
It's over there.
Oh, okay.
Yes, we just looked at it. See it?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, it's up.
Oh, okay.
Which one is it?
One.
Mom?
I guess that one.
Okay, perfect, so I'm going to get started. So I'm Kristen Inka, I work with Baxter and Woodman, and I lead a planning team that does projects like this, located across the state of Texas. Can you not hear me? My voice is not very loud. Oh, so Jackson, who's also worked on this project with me, is going to take these, you know, kind of tech team back and forth. Is he yelling?
Doesn't mind.
Okay, fine. Does it work, is that what she said?
It does work.
Does it work?
It works.
Okay. Someone take me through this. Sorry, I don't read myself all the time, because I'm also asleep, so I'm sorry to count some of it. And we're going to take you through the recommendations that we've worked with the community this year, and are just going to kind of fill you in on where we're at. So can you take it, please, in a second? So a comprehensive plan, a comprehensive plan is, I would arguably say, is one of the most important documents that we have as a city. Once a plan is adopted, which we're hoping to have tonight, it sets the framework for the community ones, in terms of development, in terms of a lot of kind of like future action steps that take place, really across all kinds of departments. And so some of the things that we've done so far is, of course, we've looked at city, you know, the demographics, who's living here, kind of like age groups, you know, what is the, what is the fabric of our community, and of course, what are we looking to attract to our community? Are we looking to make any changes or keep as is? We looked at, of course, the history and the development, and then we went through a whole process of naming assessments and analysis to identify some key issues and opportunities. We shared those with our first open house, probably about eight months ago, with the community, and then we went through the process of collecting that data review. So, hey, what do you think about this? Are we in the march correctly? And so we, of course, took that data and turned it into recommendations and implementation strategies. So a lot of public engagement activities. The commissioner mentioned that he was actually part of our team as well, and so we asked a lot of, you know, staff members and members that you could potentially fund, do partnerships in the future for funding. We brought him to the table to kind of ask, you know, what are the issues and what things we want to look into? And then we also developed a series of implementable goals, recommendations, actions, which Jackson will discuss in our presentation, and kind of meet and talk about that. And then after adoption, this is kind of what I was saying, so once we've identified all that, we put it in our draft plan for review, and once that's adopted, there will be a process where we take that forward. So there could be members at the city that actually take the plan and have elements of it, where there are, you know, different partnerships and things that go forward with different groups, or maybe with the council, and even a planning commissioner that's established in the future time. And then, of course, it also prioritizes during the budgeting process, it can help with what items we actually want to fund within that year. So the fact that we're already looking at, you know, to audit, seeing what, you know, potential funding is out there, and maybe even funding outside the city. And then it can also help with future growth and infrastructure projects. So are there any partnerships with people that we need to bring to the table? I know you heard the commissioner talk about, you know, different green opportunities and things, you know, is the commissioner a potential funding opportunity? There was definitely conversation about the columns, which were important. So things like that we look into, and then we also look at bringing, you know, of course, it's a transparency document, so everybody has access to it, so if the staff changes or priorities change, you know, you want to have that document in place that you can use to modify or to change, and to also have it match with other processes here. So I'm going to turn this over to Jackson, he's going to take you through the, kind of the meat and potatoes of our report, and then we'll open up our comments.
Thank you, everyone. So the Roman Forest comprehensive plan is split up into four main chapters. As Kristen was mentioning, chapter one is the demographics and census data. It also includes a full mapping analysis, looking at floodplains, roadways, crashes, number of lanes, land uses, and all of those elements that make up your city, to try to really understand at a base level who Roman Forest is, what Roman Forest is, what the infrastructure is, and really try to gain that framework that then we can build recommendations on. Chapter two includes all of the public engagement, so this was a series of two open houses, a community survey, listening sessions, and meeting with the comprehensive plan advisory committee group as well. And we have also looked at growth projections and growth scenarios from existing data models ran by the state and county, to try to understand the lifespan of this plan. After twenty years, where would Roman Forest be? What are we planning for? These recommendations have to be relevant now, and they still have to be relevant twenty years from now as well. Then chapter three is the future city. This includes a series of goals, for example, land use and development, infrastructure, utility infrastructure, future land use, parks and trails. Those are all considered goals that then have a series of strategies and recommendations underneath each of them. So how would you implement the goal of strategic land use within your community? And then chapter four outlines plan administration, so how will the annual review process occur? How will amendments to the document occur? How will you benchmark progress? But then also, within each of these recommendations, what is the estimated timeframe, timeline? Should this be done in one to two years, three to five years, or is this a ten-plus-year visionary recommendation? Or should it be considered every single year as an ongoing task? So as I was mentioning, existing city includes an introduction, talks about the plan format, it provides regional context of the community, provides a series of demographics, as well as a whole series of mapping assessments, including the public services, municipal utility districts, transportation and land use, but then also goes in to a detailed assessment of the regulatory review. So your city ordinances and codes, looking at exactly what they are saying, what are your current standards, and then, is the current infrastructure meeting that standard? And then what are some potential ways that the code could be reinforced or improved in some sort of way? So those are also included in the recommendations and found through these assessments. The community profile specifically has a whole series of charts, looking at US census data, as well as county data, to try to understand what has growth been or changed been over the last fifteen years in Roman Forest, but then also, what is the overall composition of the community when it comes to the housing type, age, some certain health metrics, and other things associated with that. Here is a sample of some of the maps that we've produced. This includes the floodplains, annual average daily traffic, municipal utility districts, where specific city facilities are located within the community. So for example, you can look at where City Hall is, where some of the parks are, and compare that to the location within or not within the floodplain. So all of these maps sort of layered on top of each other really give you that full view picture of Roman Forest today. Some of the key findings from the existing conditions, and a lot of these themes will be repeated throughout, but floodplain risks, much of the community is within a floodplain. I believe we calculated twenty-five to thirty percent of the community's properties are within a floodplain. Significant tree canopy cover, majority residential land uses fall within Roman Forest. There are some issues with EMS and city facility capacity in areas that are currently undeveloped. There's a need for drainage improvements. There's high frac rates currently at major intersections such as Appian and Roman Forest. There are some issues with utilities and mud districts, where some of them have problems, or there is an issue with future servicing. And then also looking at regional trends and developments, so Tala across the way, and then also north of us as well, and seeing how that impacts Roman Forest. When it comes to public engagement, we had over a hundred and thirty responses on the community survey. This was just a series of questions, multiple choice and open-ended questions to try to gauge where the community is at. I believe a hundred and thirty responses is over six percent of the total population of Roman Forest, so that's a really good response rate from the end. We also had multiple task force groups and two open houses. Some of the main key concerns here, flooding, again, roadway quality, roadway maintenance, the provision of sidewalks and trails. There is a huge need to add sidewalks, to add trails, and safe walking infrastructure within Roman Forest. We heard stories of people walking along the main sides of the road, almost getting clipped by cars, so there's really a need to separate those uses. We've also heard a lot about tree preservation, open space, so as land is being developed, ensuring that trees are being preserved, and areas for floodplains and water to go are maintained as development occurs. And then also, a general interest in zoning as well, has been told through us, through the public engagement process, that is something of interest for residents. The goals and recommendations, so the beginning of chapter three here, there are six primary goals, as I've mentioned, and first goal, natural environment, and then land use, transportation number, utilities, infrastructure, public services, and the regulatory capacity. Up here is a sample of at least goal three, I believe. So we begin with a goal statement, and then, within the light yellow, we describe what the outcomes of implementing all of these recommendations would be. And then what follows is a whole series of multiple recommendations, at least ten recommendations per goal, and we also include regional examples, regional imagery, what some of these recommendations could look like, and some example communities that have implemented very similar strategies that could work here. As we were talking, we have a full page about what the pillars could look like. We provide multiple options, where the pillars could be repaired, or replaced, or moved, or there could be some sort of gateway program within the community. We really leave that up to you guys to decide after this plan. We just provided a few examples of what, in the future, some sort of gateway, if it retains, could look like in Roman Forest. And we also provided in the middle, some innovative drainage solutions, so some natural bio swales, some ways to sort of soften some of the hardscapes, where you're not just ending up with much concrete drainage ditches, there's still some sort of natural, yet still clear way with it, creating some sponge areas where water can temporarily pool in certain areas, specifically potential future parkland. And then also providing ways that the roadways can be improved, whether that's through perforated curves, adding some additional landscaping, defining the edges, so the road doesn't start sloping, and then you're driving in the ditch, ways to have different stoplights, or roundabouts, or other traffic controls, which can then help you reduce speeds, reduce crashes, and then also start to slow down across the traffic potential as well, as the area develops. This right here is the future land use plan. It was very important for us, as for the community for Roman Forest, to somewhat maintain the strategy going forward, maintaining a single-family, primarily residential style, but then also maintaining floodplains for natural spaces. So one of the main things with this map, you can see on the far right side, along the San Jacinto, we've recommended maintaining that as green space, whether that's programmed green space, or just flood mitigation land, that can be naturally inundated to help protect homes, whatever way. But overall, there is somewhat minimal change, but then we also utilize the right way from the old golf course. We recommend maintaining those as tree corridors, so flood waters can run through those corridors. They can also act as potential hard or soft bottomed trails as well through those corridors, so there could be an extensive trail network in Roman Forest as well in the future. This is a future thoroughfare and drainage improvement map. This is a future thoroughfare and drainage improvement map. So this highlights a lot of what Commissioner Gray was talking about, a lot of these, actually all of the locations he mentioned are on this map. These were areas that we heard from the community that had repeat flooding issues, culverts being blocked. So this provides the city with a framework of, okay, we have this amount of money to do drainage improvements. Where did the community say they wanted those improvements? They would look at this map and community discussion would follow. We've also provided a sort of visionary framework for what Roman Forest Boulevard could be. Roman Forest Boulevard could stay the way it is, or it could take on any one of these forms. So if you want to add a sidewalk or a path on one side, these are some options of what it could look like. If you want to improve drainage along the corridor, these are also some options of what it could look like. So just sort of starting that conversation to try to improve the main corridor of your We've also developed a future trails and pathways network. The main idea here is to provide some sort of large loop trail system, specifically along Roman Forest and Appian Way that can connect most of the community, most residences. It can get you to Roman Forest Park, it can get you to City Hall, to the Dollar Store, and all around the whole community, so creating some sort of a trail network within Roman Forest. And then lastly, we also have, for the implementation chapter, we've created an implementation action table, which specifically lists out all of the recommendations, then followed by estimated timeframes of when it should be implemented. We have listed out the level of effort. So is this something really quick, like important to change? Or is this something that's going to take coordination, grant funding, additional study and effort? That may receive four or five dots in that chart. And then we've also provided who some of the action leaders would be. So would you need to talk to the county? Would you need additional community input? Would you need to go and talk to a consulting firm for something else if there's another recommendation in there? So potential partners as well. And then also, we've provided funding as well. So would you need to go to tech stock for certain funding? Could this be something that's partially funded through developers agreements? Could this be potential funding that you receive through the county at some point? So providing what those options are for funding each and every recommendation as well. With that, I'll hand it back over to Ms. Davis.
Yeah, can I ask you a question?
I think so.
It's on the works.
My wife's in the room.
Okay, so we're at the conclusion of the presentation. And assuming the plan is adopted, this is a living document, right? And so it's not a plan that is one that's adopted and you don't touch it forever, it just sits on a shelf. This is a plan, and as soon as it's adopted, there's going to be a lot of stuff to move forward, and you have to keep going through each year to make sure that there are, you know, you keep it clean and fresh. One of the things that I enjoy most about a comprehensive plan is that when developers approach and they say, hey, what is the recommendation? What is land use for a certain property? Although it's not a firm, sort of yes or no for property that's zoning, you can use it as a guidance. And so it gives a lot of detail on what that property should be. So noting that Roman Forest, the intention is to remain single-family residential, you know, the items from that can also be incorporated into zoning in the future, and so you can sort of lock in the land use. But for now, as a comprehensive plan, that land use side is just same items document, and so it is a way of kind of have discussions with the developer, but it's not a hard yes or no with the developer unless there are order warnings of things that take place. And I definitely think that one of the main things that could be worked on with the commissioner is, you know, clearly the commission has done a lot of opportunity, you know, a lot of work with the flooding mitigation type of work. And so considering ordinance is a thing that might make sense in Roman Forest as well. We definitely heard that everybody loves the city and trees, right? And the trees are gorgeous. I know when I come in, every time I flood, there's just a kind of a level of sigh, where you're like, wow, it's really nice. And so we know that's also something that's very important to Roman Forest. And so assuming the plan's adopted, the ordinance and things are, you know, the action plan can also be rolled in, look at some process and procedures there. So I want to turn it over, wonder if there are any questions, so we'll get over there.
Council, Council.
I guess it's just a general question. My understanding is, in order to move forward to the zoning board, if we choose to go that way, we have to adopt the comprehensive plan first.
That's correct.
And it has to include a future land use plan.
With that being said, I think this is a necessary step, but I have to express my disappointment with the future planning for the city. I think that the, the things presented in the comprehensive plan, although they're, I guess nice is the right word, but there is no way this city can afford half the things you've recommended, not even afford, right? We can't extend the Roman Forest Boulevard with sidewalks and underground swamp. We can't afford to repave our roads. And yet, we're talking about putting in tens of miles of walkable paths and walkable sidewalks for the, for the very limited retail that we have in the city, right? You're talking about curb and gutter, right? There is no way this city can afford that. And I feel like this comprehensive plan completely missed the mark on what this city is and can afford with the goals. And that's my only disappointment with it. I think it has a lot of good information in there. I think it has, it's a very necessary step. There are a lot of good recommendations for ordinances that need to be revised or updated, but I just really feel that the comprehensive plan greatly overreached what this city is capable of. And rather than getting something that was actually usable for what we can do, we got things that the woodlands couldn't afford to do, and we certainly can't afford to even think about doing. And so that portion of the plan, to me, is going to require immediate revision and removal of some of those things that if this is something that we are supposed to be working towards, simply even this, right? Assuming that the city can purchase that land for tree preservation, for the flood mediation, right? The city can't afford to go buy the old golf course and do that kind of thing. That's completely outside of our capability. And even put that in as a recommendation, I feel we missed the mark in what the city can do and where it should have been focused.
Thank you, Mayor Connaughty. I really appreciate that. I think we should provide a little more clarification on what this plan is. So when you're looking at the future land use plan, technically the only control the city has for the future state and the city limits. So as part of our, as part of what we do as planners, when we look at building out a community for population projections and things, we build out the rest of the ETJ, the area that the community could, you know, bring into its city limits to look at what the future could look like, right? And because this is a 10 to 20-year plan, we build it out for you, so we have an idea of what your utilities can be, what your roadways can be, and sort of provide that visionary item in the future. What the plan is not, is it is not going to say it to you that you've defined it as today. That's definitely not what we're saying. What the plan says is that, from what we heard the community say, we heard the community say preservation of trees, hey, we really like single-family, build that out. So that's what we get. So that's what future land use is here. But technically, assuming this program gets adopted, we're only looking at the city limits, unless there are portions of the ETJ of those properties that were built on the east side of town that come into the city limits, we're showing what it could look like. So as planners, we, I have not looked at any plans and specs. I can't tell you, you know, essentially what the east side of the, you know, what the engineering requirements would be, what the building requirements, I couldn't tell you that. But it does show you that visionary framework for it. So when you have a developer that approaches, and you're starting those conversations on, hey, what could that look like? We're definitely not saying, hey, build, you know, build a Walmart. That's definitely not what we're saying. We're saying we want to, you know, maintain kind of this like smaller rural area. And should the community, if the community wants to travel in the future, this is what that could look like. So we took the comments from the public and turned it into a plan that could or could not go. But in order for this plan to go through, there has to be someone that works that implementation strategy. You know, each month, each year, when developers come in, there has to be someone at City Hall that makes that happen. Otherwise, the plan sits on a shelf, and nothing takes place. So things like ordinances and things can go first. But if you had a development that came, say it was on the side of town, you would want to know about your utility capacity, and you want to know about your future roadway systems. You want to have an idea of what the land use is. And then you'd also want to have an idea on, you know, if the staff can actually like handle that and administrative side. So that is what the plan is. It is not a saying, spend millions, and this is what a beautiful plan looks like. And, you know, my intentions of working comprehensive plans, sometimes the plan will change. And you might actually have a development that comes in that you really enjoy, and you'll want to modify it. You'll want to admit, you know, admit your comprehensive plan or your zoning gap. So if we have not been clear about that, that's on us. But it's just to show what the future city could look like, kind of looking at existing where you are today, taking those, the content from the public, and then this is what the future could look like, assuming that's what we want. So that was our intention when we put the items in our implementation plan.
I've got some comments. I'm going to turn it on. I don't know if you've got a chance to review all the deep restrictions of the Roman Forest or not, but they lay out for each, or six areas, I haven't figured out what the six one is. Each of those areas precisely where the lots will be, what kind of lots, whether they're going to be commercial lots, or whether they're going to be house lots. And I've been unable to reconcile these, the funnier paths and things. I think that's a wonderful idea, and I want to compliment you on putting this together. I used to turn out proposals worth 10, 15 million dollars for systems, and I sat up more than one night, all night long, working with other people to put these together. So there's a tremendous amount of work that went into this, and I sincerely want to compliment you on that. But back to this, I find that I, having gone through most of the areas, because when we came out here, I wanted to find out where our lots was and what else was available. And based upon how the deep restrictions lays all the properties out, I have a hard time reconciling where you would put a lot of these paths for walking paths, right? Wonderful idea. I just don't know based upon the deep restrictions where they would go. I'm not a fan of roundabouts. There's this point in Roman County, New Mexico, used to be able to drive 45 miles an hour through it, with the consequences, New Mexico. If I was to leave Texas, I would probably go there, such a clean little town. But they put in within probably three-quarter mile section, three roundabouts. The size of those roundabouts aren't too big, but it would take the intersection plus two lots back all the way around, where there's just no room. Roundabout, we've done a big ditch over here because there's not enough room. Look at taking a nineteen wheeler with a 53-foot box and trying to do a turnaround. That would chew up several people's lives. And so I'm not a fan of roundabouts. The trees, yes, I agree. People shouldn't clear cut trees, I don't know what to do about that. Councilman Davis is extremely adamant about that. The big tall trees like we have, I spent four months in rental units because I had an 80-foot pine go through my house. And if you've never had that happen, I don't wish that on anybody. My wife was really ready to move back home by the time we did it. I mean, it destroyed that poor house. So having trees is fine, but at some point in time, we don't want the trees to get too big. And I guess that's about all I have. There's a couple other comments that weren't really that great, but I mean. See, I covered the roads.
Deep restrictions.
Deep restrictions, transportation systems, I don't know. That'd be a nice thought around here, as far as the general system sometime. But again, I don't know where some of these places would go.
Yeah, so yeah, something about that, so deep restrictions. So assuming you go forward in zoning, you can consider deep restrictions, but technically deep restrictions go away. So that if you move forward and you decided that you wanted something similar to this land use plan with lot sizes and things, it would build into the ordinances and the deep restrictions. But what you can do with things like trails is that you can say where. So you could say that when future development takes place, it's on the developer's real trail, right? In front of one certain properties or whatnot. Specifically, what we're showing here is actually the long Roman Forest Boulevard, and then of course, it kind of wraps around the long Appian Way. So if there was someone that approached, you can say with new development, this is what takes place. And then I'd also recommend that if you're doing ordinance updates, you should also look at your landscaping. So we do want to maintain drainage, we definitely don't want to clear cut. And you probably want to add in native plants. So I doubt we're, or maybe for discussion, I'm not sure if the community would want countries, right? So you would go through a list of landscaping and see what kind of elements make sense for a property, and then that is what, those are the kind of things that you would add into that. To answer your question about roundabout, one of the reasons that we put it as an option, we heard over and over again that, you know, the community is very concerned with the bikes running down Roman Forest, and also the amount of dangerous traffic. So our thinking was, well, if we're going to get more development in there, we sure know that it's very much a priority for the community to slow down, and a roundabout definitely causes that. So you definitely, you know, the intention of someone blowing through Roman Forest would be pretty tough with a roundabout. And so that is one of the reasons that we showed that. But again, it doesn't mean it has to go against an option. And it might make sense for the amount of traffic that you have coming through Roman Forest now, it might actually deter, you know, traffic coming through the community. But that is one of the reasons that we added it. And we've also added it for a place that I feel like when you drive into Roman Forest, you go, wow, Roman Forest, what are your reaction? A roundabout could, if we're going to do that, to look like some signage or something available that just says, welcome to Roman Forest, or, I don't know, nestle in the trees, or whatever kind of, you know, maybe motto or something the community comes up with. And so it's more of a place that shows you arrived, you're in Roman Forest, and we're much different than anywhere else, like surrounding us. So that was the concept of the roundabout. It was not saying, Scott, go up there and build a roundabout tomorrow. It was an option for future development to consider.
I would rather see red lights and roundabouts. I'd run into these in New England and other places. And the best they do, they do slow traffic down, but when you have people going to work in the morning, and we put on more traffic probably when they do throw the roundabout there, there was very little traffic there, nothing compared to here. But anyway, that's another issue. And the deep restrictions can't just go away. If you read them, there's a process that to get rid of the deep restrictions, you have to go through. And you know, because, and that's, it's, would be very expensive. And you have to have people vote on it and all kinds of things. So anyway, thank you.
Yeah, and also to answer your question about the location of the trails, I believe those are on some amendment. We already have some utility easements that were shown to the community.
Oh, a lot of the trails are on public utility easements, along existing drainage corridors where it could easily be some sort of a shared use agreement, a shared maintenance agreement, or a shared construction agreement. And that's where a lot of this infrastructure comes down to. It doesn't necessarily put you guys on the hook saying it's definitely going to happen. This is just noting, these are the options if the opportunity comes up, if this property is being developed, this is what the community said they'd like to see. Maybe we should talk with the developer about doing this or adding this, because our plan states it as an option.
I understand on the visionary side, everything looking down on visionary, but you also have to look at our tax base, our taxes that we have to see, our funds that we have to build this type of stuff out. Like Mitch said, we don't have it, okay? So looking at a visionary plan that we cannot do, and to me, reading through all this paperwork, this is more of a history lesson of what's going on up here in Roman Forest, a lot of it. So, I mean, we got the comprehensive plan, I just don't think it's really what we're looking for. We started looking at this zoning, and I don't see much coming out of this zoning.
That's me. Thanks. Councilman Evans?
Do I have some clarifying questions? Are you saying that there are specific recommendations that you'd like to review? Is that what I'm, I'm not sure if we're discussing, or if you're saying, hey, I really want to pull this out.
What I'm seeing is through the vision that y'all have, I could sit here and say, hey, y'all want to do this, I want to build a water park back here for the kids, I want to do this, I want to do that. Yeah, that would be a great vision for the kids. Is it going to happen? No, because funding, where are we going to get the money? You know, we did this comprehensive plan, my understanding, I was on the council when it started, but as far as zoning, and I don't see.
Could you go forward two pages? They are a good example, right? No way this city is ever going to afford any of that page. We can't bury our. is ever going to afford any of that page. We can't bury our drainage and put sidewalks on Roman Forest. Never gonna happen. Never. Right? That, that's something, we can just strike that today. It's, it's pretty and it's completely unattainable for this city.
Okay. Is the, do you think the intention would be a different material or?
No, we can't afford to bury our drainage and take that land and then put sidewalks on it, right? We can't afford to pave our streets when they need paving. We certainly can't go do something. We can't afford swing sets, right? This is millions of dollars, literally millions, from the bridge to Appian to do this. We don't have fifty thousand dollars to put in swing sets. It's just not feasible for this city. And I guess, I just wish for the comprehensive plan, that some understanding from your company and our city went into, right? If this is millions of dollars, we shouldn't even have it in here. It's, there's no point discussing it. It looks pretty on paper. We're not gonna put in high-speed rail. We're not gonna put in underground storm drainage. Nowhere in this city is there underground storm drainage.
Yeah. I mean, we can, again, if these are recommendations that we aren't gonna do.
We can go through and make amendments and take them out.
Or you can actually put in different features, right? On what it could look like too.
I don't mean to be overly critical, but my frustration is, is the understanding of what the city could afford should have been a major factor in developing this plan. That y'all spent months putting together a very beautiful plan that is gonna go nowhere. So there was no point in having this even as a discussion because it was never gonna happen.
Okay. Yeah. And we can, again, like I said, we can modify it. If you're saying that there are recommendations you do not like, that's part of the process. So we go through the process. We get comments from the public on what they're looking for. We go through the process of listening to the council. That's what the plan is. So if you're saying that there are recommendations that you're really not a fan of, then we pull the recommendations out.
It's not that we're not a fan of them. It's just that they're never gonna be feasible.
Okay.
And the same thing as Mr. Sanders said with some of the bike paths and walk paths and, right? They're great ideas. And if we were building the city from scratch today and we had the resources that the woodlands have, would absolutely want them. But where we are today with a tax base that we can barely make our, right? We have, as I said, struggles buying a piece of park equipment or a maintenance truck. There's no way that we can afford these type of things. Even if somebody were to come pay to put them in as a grant, we couldn't maintain them.
Okay.
So I just think we, we missed the mark in what this city is gonna be for the visioning portion of it. The historical portion, they did a great job of explaining of who we are and where we are and what people want. But I just think the future city part, we missed it.
So I think there was a miscommunication between, when the community meant to discuss this, it was under the understanding that these are the ideas that we wanted. And I don't think that there was an implementation of a cap budget. And we can't do this because this, I mean, this was actual community members sitting down saying, this is what we would like our city to see and do in twenty years.
Well, I understand that. I'd like a Bugatti, right? But I can't get one. So there's no point in discussing it if it's not feasible.
You know, I think that, and I agree absolutely with everything that y'all are saying. I think that I see it as a, has, it has some usefulness, okay? Because it will help us possibly shape some development that's coming in here and shape it in a way that the citizens have actually told you that's the way they would like the final look to be. So I'm gonna use it to, in that way. But as far as a lot of this, take, take the underground drainage. You couldn't move all the utilities along the Boulevard ever to be able to put curb gutter drainage in. That's something that unfortunately should've been put in at the beginning. So yeah, that's one of those things that's never gonna happen. I agree with the green spaces and using some of the easements for, for trails and, and parks. That's great. But a lot of what I'm seeing is unattainable even, even at the ten to fifteen year mark because of our tax base and the lack of tax base that we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we can, I mean, we can take a look at our implementation plan and, you know, you know, see what, which of those items are sort of worth new development and which are the ones that can be now. The reason that underground drainage should've came up was because of the amount of grant funding that are out there right now, specifically with a lot of the very key party funding and because you are from the floodings and the water runs down. So there's a lot of mitigation funding for T D G that could potentially like bury the things like underground. But there are great opportunities. So when you look at the implementation table, there is no part of it that's saying Roman Forest is seventy million project. That's not all we're saying. We're saying if, if the funding was there in the project we'd set. But it also is a mixture of trying to get what the public's looking for, specifically some of those new developments in here on, you know, the new residents coming in and kind of what they're looking for. So it's kind of trying to marry what we have now and what the city could be in the future. But yeah, we can absolutely go back and look at the implementation plan and take that in mind. Usually we know through a process of a comprehensive plan, we try not to stay in a budget because we do want a vision and get those pictures out there and those thoughts of moving forward. But it does have to be one component. And so we need to look at that and, you know, and things like the, you know, you're talking about underground systems. This can also be, this can also remain, you know, a good ditch. So there are ways that you can put in different materials instead of put a trail in. It doesn't necessarily have to be concrete. So there's a lot of ways to do this. These are just images of what we thought the community was looking for. But again, if, if Roman Forest was a different thought, it's great to have a comment so we can modify and make sure we're super clear on, you know, the, the materials and things. And but if the plan were adopted, right, those are the things that you can talk about in ordinance. If your engineer would get involved with that. So he would be very much part of the conversation on like what, you know, ordinance updates and things go down for engineering standards. So this is just a plan. This is just a patterned scat picture. But we can modify those pictures if that's what we're looking for and make sure those, you know, patterns we sit to reinforce.
Any other questions from council? Yes, ma'am?
Yes. My vision, I started saying, we moved here, we moved here because we loved the, the, how quiet the city was. It was very simple. We lived in Kalamazoo, we bonded with Cabo and we were staying there, we were there twenty-five years. When we moved out here, my vision, which I had provided to the lady, which would lead Roman Forest, Roman Forest was intended to be a small city where people could get together and, or whatever. But these visions of having all of this sidewalks and sidewalks and, you know, changing, they really, the people don't, when they come into the city and they call this, like the city that's on the way now, then this is a city that they should come to. If, you know, the city that we moved to was just a small city where people know each other and what you guys and the kind of all had is just changing our city. And I, I personally, I don't like the alter changes. You know, because our taxes are high enough as it is. You can't board it for all any reason. And then, you know, sidewalk, I don't want people walking into my, my house like that. Where you're saying cover up the ditches. It's like, because we're on the Boulevard. And they have people just walking, you know, and we're like the most part of the people here brought from the forest, they go ahead and they're courting on these cars. You're not gonna be really walking or you're walking. And, you know, there are people wanting to shop and we have longer, just down the road. It's not that far away. So I personally, what I put on the survey, I like to see Roman Forest say, you know, that pretty much related enough. I don't know. Maybe that's not our opinion, but I like Roman Forest to go with this. And some would say, well, people want it deservedly. Well, they moved here, why is it trying to change? They, people can see what is Roman Forest when they moved here. So it's like, why is it trying to change? You know, it's like a lot of themselves. And yes, and finally, I love Roman Forest related. And I totally want to see anything.
Thank you for that. Yes, ma'am.
I agree with her. When we buy the land here from Roman Forest, the idea was having kind of concrete peeling, no city peeling. I have a house in Tabula that I, before I, I moved because I wanted to move here so it wouldn't be closed. But Tabula is city. And then outside of Tabula, we have everything, you know, Fifty-Nine going around up and down. But the thing to get a new inside Fifty-Nine, having this type of concrete peeling, or, you know, you can have as big a space in front of your house, you can have trees, you can have the stuff. And all you're growing is where we're now trying to size the lot. So you can put more stuff into the lot, some more stuff around. And that raises the value of the houses that people, sometimes people can't afford when you're living in a, that country place. The house price is steady and the people don't shudder, they get in charge. But when you bring so many stuff into this small city that is a small land, it's so difficult. And we have a problem with sewer, we have a problem with the water. But we like the way the city was, like a small town, big, small houses and a big piece of land around the house. And then growing the way that presented, I mean, I went through the whole thing, the living. I, I know I found some mistakes, some information there. The information you have about the extra land on the other side of Appian and, and concrete road where I now have a house.
I need to, I need to move on with council. We, actually, I didn't want another town meeting without this. If anybody got a specific question for them.
Yeah, the thing is that we can, I think if you can really work with that, with, with our district, it has its own.
I mean, this could go on for hours. We could all start putting our input in again. That's not what, that's not what this was about tonight. But thank you. Thank you, everyone. Council, any more comments or questions? We're gonna move on to item thirteen, considered and approved ordinance zero zero one dash two five. This is the adoption of the twenty-twenty-five comprehensive plan. Where does council want to go with this? We want to see some changes. We want to see if revised and brought back.
I would just like to see revised, brought back to the, more of the normal, what we can do with the city. Instead of, trying to look like the woodlands, the trails off. I, I really, I'd like to see what we can do and that's affordable for us for the next ten, ten years, you know?
So do you want to see a revised, a revised one?
I guess a question more than a statement is, at what point does our contract end for the development of comprehensive plan? Is it when we accept it and that we think we've got a product that we bought? Or is that done now? Or what was our original contract for? Because in the interest of time and moving forward with the process of zoning, I would like to adopt something and then go back and amend it. If once we've adopted it, then it's considered accepted and we got what we paid for, then I don't think right now we got what we paid for. I think that part of this is not ever going to be within the city's reach and it's not realistic for the future portion of it. For the existing, for the regulatory, for the ordinances and the things we need to do, I think it's a great comprehensive plan. I think there's very concrete steps that we can take from what we have right now and move forward. But there's parts of it that I would like to see revised under our original contract. And I guess I want to know is, if we adopt it as is, are we going to put some supplemental services to get it to where it's realistic for the city? So that we're not, we're not tying ourselves to additional services. So where do we go from here to get what we need still under our original contract?
You can adopt it today with the intention that we can edits that are acceptable to the council. That basically Scott, like issues a through council, make sure it's okay. Or either we can, you don't have to have any action today. And then we can come back later in another day and adopt it at that time. The process is the same, that the plan would have to come back to the council to make sure that it's, you know, we need comments from you. That's something we have to ask for is like actual comments from you. We addressed the plans we received. So we would have to know what those were to make sure that we're actually sending back a plan that works for you. So we need to compile this from you and then address the plans and send it back to Scott. Send the list back to council for approval. So you can adopt it tonight with that expectation or you can, we can come back there at any date. But the planning part is the same. We would still be, we comment or we also need to address it.
Adopt it tonight, do what?
It allows us to move forward with, the comprehensive plan has to be adopted before we move forward with zoning.
Yeah.
So zoning is not an overnight process, right? Zoning boards have to be created. People have to be appointed to them, whether it's council or other people. But it's a process. None of that can move forward until the plan's adopted. My only concern with waiting for the revisions is, is that one month or is that six months?
I understand that.
And so as we've seen with the liquor store that's gone in the front, the liquor store on Appian Way, the liquor store at Roman Forest and Galaxy, right? We need something now to prevent smoke shops, tattoo parlors, right? Whatever. And so, the plan may turn out to be a positive thing, right? At least it looks much better than a vacant Dollar General or a ninety-nine cent store, right? So, yeah, it's, at least it's not an abandoned building. So I want to do whatever's best for moving forward with better control for development. And I think that's adopting the plan. But I think it, there needs to be some significant revisions, at least in the future city and the visioning portion of it. Most of the plan I, I think is extremely helpful and it's right on target. Just to the ideas where it comes to our financial capability to meet some of those goals, right? I think that's where we got off track. And maybe it was when that was discussed, it's what do you want? We want Disney World, right? But we can't.
Yeah. My comments are a little bit more straightforward. Is this the end of this contract period? And if so, what is the additional cost?
Scott, it's not, there is no amendment to it. It's the, we need to finish the end period. And so there isn't, I don't think there's a deadline on it. We have a general schedule. I think we're in alignment with that. But there isn't, I don't think there's a contract amendment first go or from me unless you want to do schedule.
No, it's a, I also know that if you don't accept it tonight and you make changes to it, then you could affect things through grants and things in the future.
That's my observation.
Some of the things that are in there, she can explain it better than I can.
Yeah. So one of the things that we've recommended, a huge thing to recommend is a green collar resilient community experience that is probably gonna end by the end of this year for, to the platform zoning. And it's something I've talked to Scott about. So it's sort of the second part of the contract is to go, because you have to have funding for it, but you go through the process of creating the zoning ordinance. And what we've been told by the general office, the general, the general that gives the funding, is that it's supposed to be closing by the end of this year. And so they're basically, unfortunately, because until elections, we start trailing back on certain things that we wanted. And so we ensured that was thought, that it's an opportunity. Because we tried to identify grants, but we were into funding that didn't make sense. And that was one of them. And so we showed them that. Again, we did it. It's pretty, like I generally heard what y'all were saying. But we knew what the comments were. We could address this pretty fast. I'm pretty sure we did. Change out pictures, like wordsmith. I don't think the changes that y'all asked before are that hard to do. It's just we need to come through the report and really dial back. What I think I heard you say was, we're looking for more of a rural environment instead of urban environment. And so we can definitely do that. And you talk about trails and future development and stuff like that. So.
Then I'm in favor.
I didn't hear that that's something that's hard.
I'm in favor of approval. Everybody on the, and sending any comments for the revisions.
But we're talking about amendments to the, to the plan will change our grants. So we have to approve everything without any additional approval, right?
But we can still make amendments to the plan, just like an ordinance. We can make amendments to it on a regular basis.
We can make amendments, but it affects the grants.
No, you can't get the grants without accepting the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. So is that the end of calendar year or end of fiscal year?
You happen to have step one before you go to step two. And step one is accepting it before you can go to step two with grants.
Accept what they want, use what they want. And then the parts that don't fit, whatever in there, they just don't ever address those again.
Yeah. Right. So it's like even you can adopt it tonight with a motion that we address the comments that you're asking for, right? That we're gonna address it from Scott. That we're going to address it from Scott, and then we give us the comments, we address it, and then once that's done, it's already adopted on this date. So it's like an administrative approval. You approve it twice the council and then it's administrative through the.
Before you adopt it, use what you want to use for your, for the zoning purposes. The parts we don't want to use, we don't use and insert.
I would still like to amend it so that, right, the intent of it is a visioning for where the city's going to be in top five, ten, fifteen years. And what if we put in there is not something we're going to pursue, then all we've done is could have been a three-page document that said we want a zoning board. Right? And that's all we needed. Was a land use map and a?
No, I just wanted to make sure you knew that there were two options.
Right. But I don't think leaving it as is is a desire, at least not for myself.
Not for me? So.
Are we good with the forward that way?
So you can do either one. Doing amendments does take some procedures you have to have. You have to have availability for public comments, I believe. So it isn't, it, it takes a little bit of time. Of course, if you want to just go from scratch, you're gonna have to do that stuff too. So again, you can pass the comprehensive plan as is and then begin developing a zoning board, getting the zoning ordinances in place.
Okay.
Pursuant to what, and everything you can do so long as it's pursuant to the current, to what was passed in the comprehensive plan. Future stuff that might not really be touching on what the ordinances might involve, that can be changed over time.
Could you put the land use map back up? Because I think it is, you're not out of line with what we're looking for, so.
So land use, what we do with land use is we get the single family, we can change it.
Right, as you said, that's not something we would need amended. So if we wanted to move forward with the zoning and that's part of the requirement for the zoning, I think that your land use plan is generally in line, right? Not the, not the walk paths, but you know, again, that a lot of it is in the ETJ, that it's not part of our immediate needs now anyway. And if we had somebody who was going to come on and develop the entire ETJ, we could ask for green spaces behind the residential areas.
Yeah. Well, remember, this isn't zoning, right? This is just a, this is just like a guidance.
Understood.
So it folds over, yeah.
But it would be a first step, right, a guidance.
So I guess another way to help you, if there is something that's currently in the comprehensive plan, which is going to conflict with zoning ideas that you all have that you want to put in place, it would seem like it would make more sense to not pass that.
I think that's only envisioning for the future.
If envisioning, then that is something that can be amended. And so long as the zoning ideas that you have right now will not conflict with what's in the comprehensive plan, it might be worthwhile, then, then you can.
I think it's pretty closely aligned.
They can be passed, so.
Okay.
For the future land use, it doesn't differ significantly.
Yeah, and I also can also make another verification.
Sure.
So councilor Davis, how you're saying, don't, you mean, not really love pathways like this? Or than this? These are items that would come in board in the zoning that would be real specific. So if you don't necessarily like this or this, they're really right now, all they are is, you can imagine just a crayon drawing on a map, because again, they're guidance. So they're not necessarily ordinance, they're not a physical thing that says over A, over B, you have to construct this. These only become part of your ordinance if you take this concept and turn it into the plan itself. Right now, they're just graphic illustrations.
Understood.
So you still have control over it during your ordinance updates, because if you don't do this, you don't do it. So that's kind of how implementation plan works. Um, there are not, there are kind of other strategies they can buy that you want to be more forceful with, right? Like if you don't want like the one you just said, you want to be more of the flexibility now.
Councilman, this part is not here, but the green spaces, child safety zones, things like that is something that we want to be adamant about for future developments.
Yeah, so that, but that's kind of how it works. So this is a guidance. The ordinance is like technically like law, zoning is like law, so it's guidance. This is kind of what we're thinking. These are the comments we will publish. This is generally what everyone wants to see. And then ordinance and zoning is law. That's like what people are required to do today. So as a planner, like say that this was adopted, all you can say is this is generally what we want. You can't tell Scott who bought a property to do this and then build it, because there's nothing in a ordinance that says do it.
Understood.
So that's kind of how, that's how the comprehensive plan works with zoning, and I think that's why state law says comprehensive plan adopted first and then totally turning it into an actual adoption afterward. So they kind of talk. So I'm sure that helps, but that's how they work together.
My preference is to accept it so that we can move forward with zoning so that we can, with a zoning land use, ensure that even like in the ETGA, ETJ, we don't have an industrial park or a dump going.
But I still want all the comments sent in, too, and I want the revision done, because I want a complete product.
Absolutely.
Okay. So you want to turn that into a motion, council?
Yes, actually. I'd like to approve the ordinance zero zero one twenty-five and the adoption of the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan with the subsequent amendments and edits that council will send to the city administrator for incorporation into the plan.
Now, if the motion is made on the floor to accept the approved ordinance double oh one dash two five with the with the exceptions that council, the councilman listed in his motion. Do I have a second? Councilman Ellis, second set. Any other questions or discussion, council? All in favor of approval? Any issue announced? Council, at this time, we're gonna take a ten-minute break. The time is eight eighteen. Thank you all. Thank you for the work and thank you for the presentation.
Moving on back, we're gonna move back, back in time. We're gonna go to item seven. Council, this is consent agenda items. Discuss, approve, all items listed under consent agenda items. We will be voting on all this together at the end. So consider and approve the minutes of the following city council meetings. The date is August twentieth, twenty twenty five. This was a special, a special council meeting on a budget workshop. So y'all can take a look at that. We will also be looking at the August twenty first, twenty twenty five budget workshop minutes. Thank you for making more time. I'm not good on. And we will also be reviewing the August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five regular city council meeting minutes. And last on the minutes, we have the September ninth, twenty twenty five public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and, oh, sorry. We also have the maintenance report for review. The court report presented for review. The permit report, also need you to take a look at. And we will come back and get any questions answered on any of these or any changes made. Meanwhile, we're gonna move on to the financial report.
This is the funding report for August. And the total general fund budget, we have a total funds of seven hundred sixty eight thousand, seven hundred seventy three. The reserve, three hundred ninety one, two fifty five. Asset forfeiture, fifteen thousand, one hundred sixty one. FEMA, two hundred seventy eight thousand, two hundred and four dollars. COVID local recovery, three hundred fifty eight thousand, three hundred sixty eight. Two thousand sixteen certificates certificate, capital projects, thirty eight thousand, eight fifty five. And debt services, a hundred seventy six thousand, six hundred sixty one. For a total of, for the end of August was two million, twenty seven thousand, two hundred eighty one dollars. Any questions?
You can go ahead and sit down. They're gonna be reviewing it if they have any. Scott, you can go ahead and do your city administrative report whenever you're ready.
All right. Well, I get the great events committee, upcoming events first. October third through the fifth is our next community-wide garage sale. October seventh will be the national night out held at the Roman Forest Park, starting at six o'clock. There's gonna be food, fun, games, opportunities to meet your neighbors here in Roman Forest. I believe that the dinner that night is a ten dollar donation for spaghetti from Italianos. So I hope that people will come out and meet some of their neighbors in Roman Forest, get to know some people that you don't know. October twenty fifth will be trunk or treat. This event will be hosted across the street in the parking lot of the Grace Village Church. Set up if you're participating in that is at four thirty. The event starts at five thirty. November fifteenth is gonna be a coffee slash donut meet your neighbors here at City Hall at nine thirty. And it will also be in conjunction with the Roman Forest Police Blood Drive that day from ten o'clock to two o'clock. So you can come out and have some donuts and coffee and then go give some blood and save a life that day if you come out and give some blood. And the car show, Hot Rods in the Park, will be on November twenty second from noon until two o'clock. Lineup starts at eleven thirty. This will also be part of a toy drive for Christmas as we move towards that. Yes, ma'am?
We moved it from the park to across the street at the church parking lot.
All right. Hot Rods in the Park will not be at the park. It will now be Hot Rods at the church.
In the forest.
So that's some good news. So hey, let's, in administration, let's give some accolades to start tonight. We probably need some of that. First, we're gonna give a shout out to Chief Carlisle. As you'll see, when Mr. Fitz gets up here a little while and starts talking about the FEMA stuff going on with some of the road things and the park, walk trail and other things. When I got here, he was in the middle of the burl and the other storm. And it takes up some time every week, what he does. And without what he's doing, we wouldn't have the ability to fix some of those things that come along. So for those of you that didn't know, the man behind, he's in charge of emergency management and he runs our FEMA. So a big shout out to him. Also, another one for Marie Campbell. And you go back to the plan tonight, when he did the audit tonight. Marie got here eleven months ago. We got hit with the two thousand twenty three audit that hadn't been done. We didn't know it for a month after she got here. And, you know, putting those together is hard enough. Putting those together with information from the previous administration when you were part of QuickBooks and then you became part of the Tyler system and finding backup documents to turn that in. And then we finished that one, I believe we did it in February, March. And then we turned around now and we're doing another one in September fourth to twenty fourth. So we are finally caught up on audits for before Marie and Scott got here. So the next one that you do will be our first one of budgets that we adopted and what we did while we were in the administration for the city. So thanks, Marie, for getting that together. That's a lot to pull together with the company. So we appreciate that. I had a whole section in here about early voting and things. And Ms. Stewart hit that pretty good, but I'll hit it one more time. The early voting will take place October twentieth through the twenty ninth in Montgomery County Fair Association, eight to five. And then October thirtieth and thirty first, it's from seven o'clock to seven o'clock. Election information can be found on our website. Election Day is November fourth, and Election Day voting will be held at Wood Branch. Last day to register to vote is October sixth. You can go online at four one one dot org if you are not registered. For those in the community that did not participate, the two thousand twenty five, twenty six budget and tax rate were approved at a special meeting on September ninth. We appreciate all the residents that came out, voicing a opinion for the city's future. On November first here at City Hall, there will be a workshop called That's My Voice, put on by one of our residents here in Roman Forest. It's for women who are seeking to rediscover, reclaim, and reaffirm themselves and those around them. No charge for the workshop. You can look on, probably on Facebook, get a little more information, but I didn't want to put it out there since we are gonna allow them to use our City Hall that day to have it. And it seemed like a good cause for women in our community, should they want to attend that. And like I said, there's no charge for that. This Thursday, I had my first meeting with a company that does park equipment. And we're gonna meet on Thursday and look at the park, look and see what we can add. Council, Mayor, you did a great job with the budget for being able to provide some funds for that this coming year. And no, I'm not buying anything on Thursday, but I am gonna start visiting with some different companies and get us some looks at some different things so we can see what we can afford and if there's something new at the park. And for those of you out there listening on the live stream, slides are a priority. Yes, slides are a priority. Heavy trash day, and I can't believe that Matt didn't mention this, but heavy trash day is this Saturday.
He knew I would talk about it.
Oh, okay. But it's this Saturday from eight to two, and it's at Silas Park. Take all your big items that you can't put out for the trash up there that day from eight to two at Silas Park.
That is correct. No household garbage, no tires on rims, no paint, no batteries. Yeah. Anything else pretty much good?
River Trax.
Yeah, sure.
And last two things. My apologies for earlier tonight. I shouldn't have responded back the way I did to Mr. Hitt. But I think that people in our community don't pay attention enough to what we do. No, we don't go out and we don't measure the grass and see if it's twelve inches, but we do go around and we try to make things nice for this community. And we try to make it so that you're proud where you live. And Larry and his crew, like I said, we're one short right now. But they work hard every day to mow. We keep things going so that when people do come across that bridge, what they see is a beautiful Roman Forest. So shouldn't have said what I said tonight. Won't happen again. So to residents of Roman Forest, I apologize for that this evening. And lastly, I don't know if you know this or not, but one year ago tonight, you hired me.
You did?
It is. And I wanna tell you, it's been a great, I didn't start till October fourteenth, but you hired me at the September council meeting. And I do love this job. And I love coming to work every day. And I think we're doing great things for this city. I've been here thirty five years. And I wouldn't live anywhere else. So thank you.
Appreciate what you do in the city. And I would like to acknowledge you're in a no win situation with mowing because you're gonna have the Mr. Hitts that wants you to mow every week. And you're gonna have the people like me that want you to enforce that the owner of the property needs to mow it rather than us doing it unless they're paying us for it.
We're working on that. I did believe I had one ready.
Go ahead.
October the fifteenth, the city will be hosting a candidate forum for all candidates running for city council here at City Hall. That event will start at six o'clock and will be hosted by Mr. Ant Matt.
All right. Moving on to the police report.
All right. The chief and Captain Campbell are in town tonight at a local conference, that's why I'm here. As a reminder, we have launched a new mobile web app available for Androids and iOS. That is called Police Connect. It can be found at an address I will give to you. I can give it to you later, but it's a long address. Once you download the app, scroll and select Roman Forest as your city. It will default to Roman Forest when you open it in the future. There's a link on our website at rftx.org slash police to get that app. All the funding for the twenty twenty four flooding and hurricane event public assistance grants for FEMA have been sent to the state and will soon be forwarded to the city. As the chief wrote this, I am scheduling the final meeting with FEMA prior to them turning over both twenty twenty four PA grants and over to the TD, TDDEM. On August twenty seventh, we participate in the multi- agency active shooter exercise. We do this periodically to better prepare our area for first responders and identify any training needs for procedural adjustments. On August twenty ninth, the chief picked up a new vehicle for our police fleet, police fleet, police fleet. It's the Dodge Ranger Pursuit vehicle and it's getting ready for patrol. The chief behind this screenshot, five of October first. And there's gonna be a party here at City Hall on four P M on the twenty ninth of this month, September twenty ninth, for our dog. Our dog is retiring and the dog handler that has him now is gonna take it as a personal dog at her house, but will not have any dog units in the future. So if you'll come to that party on the twenty ninth at four P M, that's what's gonna be happening here.
Any questions, council? Only police report. I think you're good. Any comments or questions on anything listed under item seven consent agenda items?
One question, Mr. Council. Did you get any traction on the park equipment from the schools that were relocated?
No, they're, they're gonna build another store in that same spot.
Another one, question.
Do we make, need to make a motion to accept all previous minutes, post the maintenance report, project report, permit report, financial report? Senior administrative report, police?
Everything you can, you can.
Everything in item seven.
Item seven consent agenda items. That is correct. Did you wanna make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion.
Oh, I apologize.
Item seven.
Okay, so motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders, to accept all consent agenda items as presented. Do I have a second? Second, Councilman Reason. Any other discussions? All in favor of approval, in addition. Moving on to item eight, discuss, consider the status of the following projects, take any action required.
Good evening, Councilman. Item eight, the only thing I have really is drainage improvements. We have been working with enforcement and Scott on the item over here on some drainage that we're waiting on permits.
Permits are usually, they're not complicated, but yeah.
So we anticipate seeing that for culverts to be fixed on that. Was there a question on eight?
Any question on anything under, under item eight, council? If we can go right ahead and move into item nine, consider the items related to the police station building expansion.
Okay, so last month, we, you approved the proposal and authorized us to begin. You have as your second sheet, the initial layout that the architect prepared. This is done to Chief Carlisle and Captain Campbell. They have looked at it. I apologize. I got it over to Mitchell and Larry this afternoon and don't know if they've had it, had a chance to look at it. But there are a few things that we will undoubtedly change. We made a window here or there, a door location, adjust the wall. For the most part, these are comments that were given to us by chief and captain, and we've made those changes. We are asking council to consider approving this floor plan, knowing that there will be some adjustments to it. And so that we can go ahead and start the full plan set without.
Question, if we approve it today, you're going to release the designers to proceed. So then if we make changes to it, they're gonna have to rework it, right?
So there's, there's a lot of stuff that can, that will be done with this, plumbing, electrical, that. But there, if we're, if we're doing minor changes, moving a wall and the window or they're, or moving some stuff, then we won't. It's, you know, go with the next week. It's not gonna impact.
So many bigger questions on it, kind of just seen it this afternoon. Because I think last time we looked at this, Councilman Sanders asked if the restroom shouldn't be at the waiting area rather than where the ham radio is for the storage.
Yeah, we would.
Right. That, that was, right now, you come in the waiting room and one, how does somebody know you're there? There doesn't look like there's any window or anybody would actually see you in the waiting room and there's no access to a restroom without going back to a secure location.
Yeah, so the, the ham radio was put up front. The thinking was there is that they could come into the, they could come into that front door and not have to go into a secure location to get to that, the ham radio.
How often does that happen? That's once a month? It seems like the restroom being available to the public and the police area would be more important than the once a month access to the radios. Another minor question. The door next to the coffee bar that goes into the existing building, that one ought to be relocated further to the plan right to coincide where these are now. So we're not having to cut through brick and cut new openings. We ought to be using one of these doors as opposed to.
We'll close one of those. I'd probably use the.
So that looks like that's gonna need to shift. Those are the biggest comments, I would think, is swapping the radio and the restroom. Whether or not that affects the coffee bar, obviously you wanna keep a wet wall consistent if you can, but in that case, you might not be able to.
So on the, there's, on the hallway coming from the lobby into the coffee bar, there's a doorway there. That would, that doorway would, would be locked and controlled by the office. That office would obviously have a window in it.
So it would have some sort of a pass through window.
Yeah, there would be a pass through window on that. That office would control that door.
Understand.
That would allow them to come back to the bathroom. At the same time, that next door down, about midway down the conference, that would be the secure door for the police department. And what that allows is with that, with the door closed and controlled by the front office, the officers have access into the coffee bar and the restroom without coming out into the, the waiting room. So that's a, I guess the coffee bar and the restroom is more of a shared area, but it's controlled by the front office. Access to it is controlled by the front office.
I think, I thought I think you need to, excuse, go ahead, Jerry.
The original plans I saw had the conference room next to ham radio room, and that was so that if you needed emergency communications and you didn't have any, we can still talk. On the other side of that closet was the eight hundred megahertz radio. That needs, and there would be a tower there tied off at the top peak of the building to give it some support, Roman twenty five power. And just sent a manual on that tower and how to, how to set it, uh, afford those. Also then, there would be a secured door between the conference room, because if you want a jury, whatever, they'd go out the back door, go into the conference room. Also then, um, there would be a secured door between the conference room, because if you want a jury, whatever, they'd go out the back door, go into the conference room. So basically, with the exception of one office, uh, that right hand would be, uh, open to people, just because you'd have to have them come in. You have the restroom down there. They would have access to the conference room if they wanted to have a conference, if not be in the middle of the police. So it makes, uh, rearranging that back like they used to have, it actually makes more sense, uh, than, than this. I agree with Councilman D., this is about, about the restroom.
So if the restroom and the ham radio did flip, uh, for the most part?
Well, you have to have a five-foot turn radius on restroom, and right now, you can't do a five-foot turn radius on restroom with the door like a stone. Okay, so the, the ham room is again, you have a five-foot radius around the toilet. And the ham radio room, I would say, you'd think it'd be that big, doesn't it, Jerry?
Well, we need, and actually, we had a barely an area of just big enough to get into. Uh, we, no, we, you know, we, we just need an access in there, some shell, uh, to put a table to put the radios on. Because if we lose communications, we can send emails. And if the conference room is used as an EOC and you have no other communications, because we don't have satellite here for, for standard communications. Maybe with Starlink, we'll...
This room is just for storage, though, right? So right now, if we swapped the ham radio in the restroom, leaving the room sizes the same, you'd have roughly a seven-by-seven storage room for the radios. Doesn't mean that's where you'd have to operate from, but that's where they use.
And that's enough room, I mean, that's, uh, because...
So that sounds like a big...
That's a simple enough fix. Uh, the only, with that, um, and I have the chief, um, put his, uh, thought to it is, is that that, that would be a public restroom. It would not be an officer's restroom, unless they walk out into the waiting room.
Correct. It could still be shared use, but it would be in the public area.
We looked at two restrooms, but it takes so much room for that second restroom and it cuts into the office spaces.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree.
One other thing, this single, this double door here, we could save a few thousand dollars on this project. We'll just leave this door, these double doors here, instead of going to a single door.
Or just use part of the frame, make a single door, but use the existing open.
Yeah.
Without having to do a, any masonry work, because it's going to be interior, you could just drywall that in.
So restroom swap?
That's a relatively minor change.
Restroom swap, door, shift the door down. What else did y'all see?
Uh, that was the biggest, swap the ham radio in the restroom, uh, utilize this cut opening however we need to for access to that hallway. Question, it's going to be one of their 88 questions, I guess, is one of the hallway doors into the existing building opens into this building and one opens into the hallway. If that's a fire corridor, I don't think you can open into that hallway. I think they're both going to have to open into this existing building. But I don't know how that's going to work, which way is a fire route. They're both, one's labeled exit, but it comes into this building kind of over there in the corner.
Yeah, so the, the fire is, you split the hallway in half. And so you're, you've got three exit doors that all push in the direction of travel. And then this, which has to be an exit, remain an exit, will swing...
But that doesn't exit to the outside, right? So I thought in the renovation, we were putting an exit door over here for the renovation for this room, there was going to be an exit door over here.
That's...
Yeah, that's not in this funding. Those are things that, renovation here, there's some things that needed, that, uh, I think that's planned for back in what the existing police department is, some of the rooms up front. We are not including them in this. It was, the chief had that on an overall plan. But this funding for it was not adequate to do all that work.
So that's a significant change in what we discussed. I thought that all of the renovations were under this budget, including all the renovations in here were under this single budget. If all we're talking about is the expansion and nothing is being renovated in this section, correct.
No, I thought it was...
This may have invited to get to a better building.
The last time we saw the plans, it included all the renovations in the existing one, and if we're taking all of that out of the scope, that's quite a reduction in scope.
But the rest of the building and everything wasn't the total price, it's still the job.
I thought it was...
Three hundred thousand was in, was this here only for building, a building and that. But this here right now, with this here being seventy thousand dollars from building, and I don't know how much the interior worth is going to be, another hundred thousand?
So, at least, right, so I mean...
So we're going to about two hundred thousand in this building, so probably have hundred thousand dollars left in the other building to remodel this one here.
Do we have a, have the engineers done a, a budget analysis of just this, what's on this drawing, Greg, do we know?
We have not done that yet.
Man, I'm just curious, with the budget that we had taken from the FEMA money, my understanding was it was this expansion and renovating all of the existing city hall.
It was, absolutely.
But we're saying that that's not the case for this?
I see that now, no, I understand, yeah.
I'm asking the chief right now.
What's that?
He's watching.
Yeah, ask chief. So, yes, I, I would, yeah, I would like to see all of it included.
Because I don't know that this would still be considered an exit if it opens into a hallway and you have to go through two more doors. I don't know if that's still considered fire, is there?
I mean, if we're renovating City Hall, the property, we're, we need to renovate the City Hall. We need to see that, that plan altogether and approve that plan altogether.
That would be my preference rather than piecemeal. If we don't know what this cost and we're approving this and then we go forward and we don't have any money for the rest of it.
Yes.
Then I feel like we're not getting what we thought we were getting.
No, I agree.
Good, so he's, so he's, he's good with the bathroom and the ham radio. Uh, he doesn't want any delays. Idea for the building, trying to save money as much as we can on the building or build out, so that we can afford to do some of the walls here and there for the city side. So if we can save a little bit of money, we'll put the money safe into the existing building.
That does not make me feel more than...
The grant money that he had was...
So if we're talking about only things that we get for cost cutting are going to go into the other side of the renovation, I, I don't think that's what we agreed to when we we approved the money for the renovations.
Yeah, originally, we seen just a rough drawing or a rough, what rough, it was actual drawing, of, of the complete renovation.
That's correct. I thought this room was going away, that it was a code enforcement office, a permit office, a clerk office, city administrator moved to the front. Because if we're not renovating all that, then all of that police department stays, the police department, and none of that becomes...
I thought they were, I thought they were taking down, like, uh, officer guards, isn't it?
They were taking that, the...
Taking that out and making a door, making a door.
Right, and that your office would move to the chief's office and there were other renovations there, but none of that's reflected on this. I would just like to make sure that we know what we're getting for the money that we're putting towards this and we're not just saying, we're going to spend it all here and if we have any savings, great, we'll do some minor renovations. That was not my understanding.
No.
It was a package deal. It was both the expansion and the renovations and that this doesn't take priority over everything else. It's combined.
I think the overall cost of this would be two hundred thousand.
That's, well, I'd, I'd like to see a budget before we approve it, then if
Yeah.
Before we get too far down the road in the design, then we have to come back and say that's, this is now three hundred and fifty, that's our full budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I like what I see here. Reg, council wants to see the rest of the, the rest of it.
Okay.
And, and then a price put to that. That's, that's where we need to go.
Correct. I'm not disagreeing with what's on here, with the swap with the ham radio and the restroom. I think we're, we're ninety-five percent of the way there. There are other minor changes. I just want to understand what the total project is, that we're not going to release this for bid and then if we have any money left over, we're going to do the rest. That was not my understanding. It needs to be, how do we get the entire project within budget to move forward?
Okay. Any other comments, counsel, on this particular, go ahead?
And I'd like to know where you planned on, would plan on moving the, uh, eight hundred megahertz radio, because there's an antenna outside for that. That was going to get relocated in the back of a closet at the left side versus the right side of the conference room. And so that, because they'll have to get moved.
The antenna with its height?
No, the one on the side, inside the building. There is a, there's a police radio in there that they listen to. And that will need to get, get moved over here eventually. And so, that's, that's, or you can say, that was why the tower off the end, the 125 tower, it's not that expensive, but it will need some cement. Okay. I can forward to you, if you'd like, uh, the manual on the 125 tower to tell a lot about it.
Okay, yeah, that would be good. I need the foundation.
Richard Griswold sent that email. Uh, I'll get your, meet you, I've got your email as well, if you need this one.
Okay.
And I'll forward you what Richard forwarded to me, I'm going to, Richard Griswold. There's one thing you really, 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 here is fine, but it's going to be a table chase, but that doesn't address the...
So if it's okay with counsel and chief, I will schedule a meeting with Mitchell, Larry, chief, the architect, so that we can go over this and make sure that everybody is, is under the same understanding. But, because I understood that the grant was for this, uh, that he has. And as he said, said to turn it over to City Hall as soon as the building is done. If I have to do the work myself or have to make it self, we'll make some of the improvements, if not all of them. But I'll, we'll, we'll get that resolved in the meeting as soon as the chief gets back to give the schedule.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's where we, we want to go with this. You've already got the authorization, city engineers prepare plans and specs, so you get to...
I would just ask that, so we can move things forward as quickly as possible, set up that meeting as soon as Larry can work it in the schedule, but chief, I've got two weeks and then I'm going to be out of the country for two weeks.
Okay, well, as soon as chief gets back, we'll get with, with the two of you, we'll get a schedule.
Three weeks, whatever the length is, is what I...
We'll get a schedule before you feed.
Anytime after 3:00 PM. On Monday, Thursday, Friday, anytime, Friday.
Okay. We'll do that.
We're good with no action needed on item nine at this time.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on to 10, this is also here, consider items related to FEMA park and parking lot repairs and city road repairs. This is from the 2024 spring flush.
Yeah, so there are, uh, chief has done his work and there are two, uh, grants that FEMA has apparently approved and has gone to the state level. One is for the park, which was discussed, um, against last, over the last couple meetings. That is, uh, there's a, the estimated cost that FEMA provided, uh, to what the fed share will be. And then the second one, uh, is one that you had, it was the roads that just came in. There's thirteen sites, forty locations, there's some A's and C's in that. That goes through all of those locations, um, and the federal share on that, uh, right now is just under two hundred and sixty-two thousand for that. Those numbers are not in concrete, uh, but as, uh, as reported earlier, chief is getting this meeting with state officials on this to get all of this wrapped up. At that point, we'll know exactly what we're doing and, uh, hopefully that'll be resolved and we'll have a proposal to you for these two projects or combine these two projects.
Question, it looks like the federal share is seventy-five percent of the project, which is fantastic. Does that mean that we're committed to having to spend the other, in this case, eighty-seven thousand dollars for these road repairs? And we don't have eighty-seven thousand dollars set aside in the budget for road repairs?
Yeah, my understanding is, uh, no. Okay. We will, we will work inside, uh, the fed share of that, um, to get what we need done for that.
Okay, so we can do, in theory, we can do seventy-five percent of the work that they funded and then the other twenty-five percent we would do as available funds?
Yeah, or we'll, we'll, we'll work it where we, the project pays.
Hundred percent of the project, seventy, seventy-five percent.
So that's, uh, more for your information and the chief will hopefully be here for that meeting to do the real...
All right, so no action on item 10. We've already covered 11, 12, and 13. Moving on to item 14, discuss and approve a franchise agreement with Entergy.
So in nineteen seventy-five, the city of Roman Forest signed a franchise agreement with Entergy that just expired and they're offering a updated renewal to that for twenty-five years, not fifty this time, it'll be for twenty-five years. If you look on the first page, after the, uh, agenda page, that was this year's payment that came in from Entergy. And it shows you how the formula works, times their, uh, franchise fee rate to get the total forty-three thousand dollars. And then if you look, as you go through the, uh, I met with Brian Garcia with Entergy who explained to me that this is a standard agreement that goes to every city. The rate for all cities are the same, everything is the same, and the way they do it on their franchise fees that they give to different municipalities.
And the franchise fee is consistent across all municipalities within Entergy's service area?
What he said, yeah.
Scott, the, uh, just here, notification of the payment, forty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-dollar rate. Does that take into consideration the new section back here or just?
This, the one that we got?
Is that just an example one here?
No, sir, this is this past year for all Roman Forests.
Okay.
From the bridge to the fuel max.
Okay.
Just one more though. Thank you, sir.
Maybe my guess is with Entergy, it's not very negotiable.
No, sir, it was, that's why I think he said that in our first, in the first sentence, was that this is across the board, it's a standard.
All right. So, that's been approved, the franchise agreement. You have a discussion on that?
Goes for another twenty-five years?
Yes, sir, twenty-five years, what we're signing off on.
I'm just, how do they make those payments? Is it like monthly based on kilowatt usage for that month or quarterly or biannual or?
This time it was, the way they did this one was for the year.
So they just wait until the end of the year and cut it?
They get one big check and we got it on, middle of July, we got it, yeah.
How much I think is, I like, I like that one, that's, that's what it is.
Okay.
We need to get some of them, if they come in monthly, quarterly, not monthly.
But they're all spread out throughout the year.
So I would need a motion and a second to approve the franchise agreement with Entergy as presented.
I'm making a motion to enter, enter into an agreement with the franchise renewal agreement, as they proposed.
All right, motion on the floor, Councilman Sanders to approve the franchise agreement with Entergy. We'll have a second. Councilman Reasoner, seconds. Any other discussions, counsel?
Quick questions, sir. By the way, it's for taking care of streetlights and all those kinds of things. That's all status quo. I didn't catch that in here.
Yeah, streetlights, we pay for several.
Individual pay, yeah.
And, and you individually pay for the one in front of your house.
I pay for this.
We pay for the ones on the boulevard, which is a pretty good chunk of money.
No, no, that's true.
No, nothing of that changed, no, sir.
Motion, Councilman Sanders, to approve second, Councilman Reasoner, any other discussion? All in favor of approval, it's an issue.
And I don't know that it matters, Chuck, but on their cover letter that says, June twenty-twenty-six, I think that should be fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, on his, he got his date right, so it's going to sit there.
I did check that online.
Yeah.
I had in my mind that it was the twenty-five, yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to item fourteen, uh, fifteen, discussing, consider approval to purchase a vehicle for the maintenance department. Okay, moving on to item fourteen, uh, fifteen, discussing, consider approval to purchase a vehicle for the managed department. Council, do you have a stack of?
I'm gonna add. Add to it.
He's gonna add two, awesome, more paper?
More paper. So, as you, they're in order, and the top ones are the new trucks, and you'll see they use as you go through them. This last one that I'm handing you is one that, uh, Mr. Ellis and I have been working on together. And, uh, it, uh, it comes with some, uh, interesting, uh, the, the truck is forty-nine thousand dollars. It's a two thousand twenty-four. It's got less than a hundred miles on it, but in negotiating with them for the past couple of days, they, um, are refusing to take off the tax off of there, and we don't pay taxes as a municipality. And I've talked to their finance person and I've talked to their, uh, person that puts the, uh, the deeds through. And they said, no, that's not what we do here, and so.
Can mine recover that through the state, even if we pay it, can we get it back?
Um, there is a way to do that, but I was reading about, I started reading about that late today, but I will tell you. It just, in talking with them on the phone and dealing with them, the fifty-six thousand dollars that you see at the bottom, they had a protection package in there for thirty-two ninety-five. And I talked to them on the phone today and I said, asked them what all that entailed, and all that really entailed was a, uh, spray bed liner and a tent on the glass, but nothing else. And so he said, well, we'll knock that down to nineteen ninety-nine. And I'm like, just dealing with them, I didn't feel comfortable. I just felt like somewhere it's not gonna, there's gonna be something in the, since it's a twenty-four and we have other bids that are twenty-sixes for four or five thousand dollars more. I just feel like I would rather go with a known commodity that we dealt with, um, from the city, rather than somebody that we haven't. Could they save us a little bit? Yes, but when you, you get a bad feeling about something, the bad feeling usually works out. And I have one on this, but I did not want to not bring it to you, but when they're refusing to take off the, the tax.
Yeah, but even with the tax worth forty-nine thousand compared to sixty?
Now, with the tax, you're at fifty-six on this one.
Plus the, minus the rebate of eighty-five hundred?
No, sir.
Or that's including the rebate?
That's including it, yes, sir, it's the bottom line prices.
Just looking for where the rebate comes off, I don't see the rebate deducted though.
Yeah, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see if it's on that page.
Selling price forty-nine.
Look at this, sixty-six, minus eighty-five.
See the market value. I don't see that on the rebate, I see the discount.
Yeah, but I think it was just a discount is what he put on there, it's, it's a online, it's an online truck is how we found this, right, Mr. Ellis?
Yeah, I found it on, just on AutoTrader, but the, the out-the-door price on this truck is fifty-five, one-thirty-four, sixty-two. The, I guess they didn't, on this one, they, this one right here doesn't reflect the, uh, protection package they pulled off. But it's still, the protection package is still nineteen-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars, so what they sent me. Yeah, it's, 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 it's a thousand and four hundred dollars less than this price.
Isn't that the window tent and the spray bed liner?
Yeah, they took out fourteen hundred dollars for that.
It's still too much. Oh, yeah, I, I just paid four-hundred-and-fifty to have U V protection sprayed and liner up. And it cost me an extra ninety, I think, to have tinted on both the front windows.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, it's a hundred, hundred-and-twenty dollars for the tent, and that's with the brow across the windshield. And I get the brand-new bed liner sprayed in at V I P for two-hundred dollars.
Further into your packet, you can get more cars, the first one, after that is the one that we brought to the last round, uh, which is one that, um, they would have to still build that one. But it also comes with the best warranties that we would get out of those. Um, and then there's the ones that you asked for from the other two dealerships, and then there's some used ones. I think there's five or six used ones, and they're from the same dealerships on the U side.
One uses.
But they're each one paper clipped separately, so you can look at it separately, you don't have to look at them all from.
Did you forget the safety destination charge?
Tommy Von was a little crazy there, wasn't he?
You know, they, yeah, I guess, so where we're sitting, where, what we're looking at is, we would still like to go with the original proposal that we brought you last time to build the truck. Um, we know it would take a couple of months to get it, uh, somewhere between ten and twelve weeks, but, um.
Can we get a commitment on that? Because I think the last time we had a police vehicle built for us, it took nine to twelve months.
Yeah.
To actually got it. So we bought a brand-new truck, brand-new police vehicle that was more than a year old by the time we got it?
No, we talked to him on the phone today and he said nine to twelve weeks, so.
As long as we get that.
Could be on the high side, could be on the low side, we're gonna have two holidays in there, so, um.
Which, who do you, which dealership is that?
Martin.
Martin's.
Who you dealing with, Adam?
The name is Jim Potter.
Was that sixty thousand out the door?
Yes. It does not include, it does not include the, uh, the last paper I gave you of all the upfittings, it does not include those things.
Yeah, so this last one came from dealer support, local company, they rigged out all the county trucks, I hadn't just quote, real guard, headache rack, steel toolbox, safety lighting, uh, and that was it. So you see the total for that, and the bed liner and the tent would be an additional, let's say, three fifty to be safe. He doesn't do that, that would be V I P tenor, he never sent me a quote today.
Right.
I know, yeah, anyway, so additional three fifty on top of this thirty, forty-five due to the, so you look at it, thirty-three ninety-five, thirty-four hundred dollars to upfit it.
Nice thing about ordering out of the factory, you get exactly what you want, but then councilman Davis was concerned about the seats, he wanted vinyl seats.
Rebound seats, rebound seats, there's no beaded seats, we're not heating the steering wheel, um, but there, the difference between the two from Martin is one sixty thousand and some change, and one sixty-one and some change. The difference between, uh, single, single rear wheel and.
Do we?
Which can pull, you know, pull more capacity, should we have that knee of, uh, you know. I wasn't here during the hurricanes, working it, I saw what they were pulling and what they were doing. Uh, the maintenance people, police department, anybody else that had a chainsaw and flush stuff was being moved out of people's driveways and yards and things, just somewhere, so.
You didn't notice in here, when I looked through it, but do they include, uh, with these, do they include the, uh, hundred-and-ten volt, a hundred-and-twenty volt outlet in the back of the truck?
I don't know that answer. There's a spec sheet in, in that.
Yeah, the spec sheet's there, because that, that would save the generator, I mean, it's nice if you need power, it's only good for, uh, for fifteen amps, but that'll drive it, that's right.
I didn't look at the spec sheet for that, but.
And then they, they have to get a package to get that, I don't know.
Twelve volt power outlet, no, there is no, this is no inverter on it.
One thing we have learned, um, during this process, uh, is you really don't want to do it again. I see why it's nine, ten years between trucks here in the city. Just dealing with the different dealerships, dealing with online now, as opposed to walking in and looking at one, it's, uh, everyone's a little bit different, everyone's got it on something that draws you to it, but we're just looking for what's best for the city.
Let me suggest, if you get the extended warranty, get the G M. I can't get the last time to get a real line until I'd already signed the paperwork. It's a third party, and they need to check a seatbelt.
Only two, two, seven.
So get the, uh, when they, they, and they, they, they get commission off of the same, right?
Yes.
They, they have more commission on the third party than they do straight to, uh, the G M.
So the, the second truck, the single rear wheel truck from Martin does have a hundred-twenty volt outlet.
Scott, did you see how we can get the, uh, tax back or? So first, I don't know why they would include, so the, uh, motor vehicles are not, cities are taxed then for a person under motor vehicles. It's just done through a different form, it's done through the title registration. You submit saying that you are a public agency and you're exempt per summit to, uh, the transportation code. If they, I guess, won't adhere to that, or if they have a certain specific method of, they charge it and then you have to go, there, there is a method to have a, like a refund through the tax control. Uh, I don't know timelines, I don't know, all I know is that there does exist a refund mechanism, but I'm not, I'm not familiar with the full process of it, how long it takes or. Yeah.
And they're also going through a buyout right now?
Is doggy bomb?
Doggy bomb out, and they make you talk to somebody, nobody can answer you, they gotta go talk to somebody else.
Yeah.
And that was where I ran today, talking to three different people about this, the tax thing.
Tax, yeah, I understand.
Or probably just talk to the lane yourself out of five.
I, I think the fact that it's a different point, I think the, the fact that you don't apply to, for the exemption directly to, to do it through title registration application, perhaps confuses, confuse them with the turnover or something.
I don't think they dealt with cities.
And that could be.
And we were not dealing with a free person, we were dealing with the internet seller person.
Right, yeah.
All right, council, which paid you all the bill on this, I hate that that's a, how many miles on this truck?
Which one?
The Russell, Russell Smith, the sales tax.
They said under, under a hundred, the, it, I don't know what the story is, I don't know if it was just a new truck and it got overlooked, uh.
And that one basically was fifty-five thousand?
Yeah, it's fifty-five thousand, and then if we could get the tax worked out, they would probably drop it to fifty-two.
Yeah, drop thirty-two.
Yeah.
So that makes the new dual rear, rear wheel diesel truck, pretty much in the same price range. And it being new.
We were asking, uh, asking how many miles were on that Ford, yeah, that one.
He said it was less than a hundred, and then I questioned why he put up here that it was a used car. Was it, was it considered?
He had told me that because they're getting bought out, I guess he doesn't have a working system. He didn't sound like he had been in sales very long. I was just like, I just need a P O.
Well, the price difference between the Martin and the Russell Smith, what type of warranty do we get from Martin on new twenty-six, three fifty?
I think they're the standard, like, what, three years, thirty-six, power train is for six years, I believe.
Who, who was given the ten-year warranty? With, I thought we probably heard of that?
Who gives a ten-year warranty on a vehicle?
I know, I mean, that's what, I probably, I've heard of the other day.
Probably Honda.
I didn't get my seven, I spoke out of traffic.
I'm more of a, more of a Martin, the brand-new one, yeah.
I'm kidding, Subaru.
Sixty-one thousand, five forty.
It's the single action or dual?
Dual last one.
That's the dual, the single action?
Brand-new.
The only thing a single action has is that the dual is nine, is a hundred-twenty volt outlet, and the price difference.
I'm still, I went through the fall, twenty-twenty-six, Martin.
Are we ready to make a decision on the whole side over here, council? Are we ready to make a decision over here?
I prefer to try to save some money and try to work this out with them, I don't know anybody over there, it doesn't matter, but that would be, if we could figure that out, that would be awesome. And if not, uh, then not do this.
Rather than buy a truck that was sitting on the lot for two years, when I had a brand new, but two, uh, two thousand twenty-six, we're a little bit more.
Twenty-twenty-four is still a twenty-twenty-four.
It is.
Yeah.
Then sit there for a week.
The older inches for the.
I don't stand a stake.
Uh. Yeah.
Well, between the two, one is, I think I've always regarded how the dual, when I can, especially if you get into a heavy road or you get out in the mud and get stuck.
Yeah, it's present, wait out, it's more safer. Split the load out, safer, safer.
Can I make a motion on this one?
You absolutely can make a motion anytime you want, sir.
Okay, I'm making a motion, we buy the truck from Martin, twenty-twenty-six Chevrolet Silverado, thirty-five hundred H D, or drive down the half hundred sixty-two H four truck with dual rear, rear, uh, rear wheels, proceed to one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and ten cents.
Okay, um, okay, so that is a motion, truck price sixty-one, five forty, uh, title license fee is five hundred, so price is up to sixty-two forty.
Minus three.
Minus one thousand, so we need, what I'm saying is we need to say not to exceed, uh, not to exceed, not to exceed the sixty-two, uh, sixty-two thousand, if we want.
I would with that.
You would with that?
I would.
Include an upfitting part?
This, please.
No.
Truck price is sixty-one, five forty, plus five hundred dollars approximately in title and license fees.
And, and sorry to keep asking you about your motion, but we also have the upfitting of the three thousand forty-five dollars, plus the three hundred fifty dollars of the window tent, bed liner, that would bring us to thirty-four, I'm sorry, thirty-three ninety-five, for the upfitting. So it would be the price of sixty-one, five forty and ten cents, plus the five hundred dollar title fees, plus the thirty-three hundred ninety-five dollars. So we need a total for that, not to exceed, somebody give me a total.
Sixty-five, five, is that?
That sounds right, but.
Sixty-five, five, we're gonna say sixty-six thousand.
Sixty-two plus thirty-one.
So we, it does have a whole number.
I understand, okay. Motion on the floor, councilman Sanders, to purchase the truck from Martin G M T, Martin Chevrolet. This is the twenty-twenty-six Silverado, thirty-five hundred H D, dual rear wheel truck, uh, for the amount not to exceed sixty-six thousand. Can I have a second?
Give me a second, I've got a question.
Councilman Reasoner, seconds, discussion.
Better figure covering the extended warranty.
I don't think there is a price on extended warranty.
Wait on, they'll be, if you get an extended warranty on them, that's something we need to determine, because we'll have to do that when we buy it.
I think we got another six thousand dollars to head at FEMA.
Well, you could just make your motion.
They, we're, we're still in discussion, so.
What it was.
Yeah.
And then I won't go over that, but I also won't, couldn't even come close to it, but if it's there, if I had to, we're gonna extend it to a hundred thousand dollars, from Mr. Reasoner, that's.
I think the engine has a hundred thousand on it, I think it's the bumper, 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 you would have to extend.
Yeah, from what I'm seeing, well, if you lose a.
Yeah. Well, I'm seeing, well, if you lose a computer or the dash or something like that, that'll cover that. And that'll break you up to two or three thousand dollars.
I got a seven-three on so, you have two hundred thousand miles. It's worth like twenty grand.
It comes with a factory warranty.
It does. Because of the cell light warranty.
Motion here, we're, we're in discussion, so we're.
Scott, does that have a three year, thirty-six thousand mile, starts out, comes and pisses with it?
And are there different things for the powertrain?
Another question I would like to know is how many miles do we put on the truck?
No more than, I would say it's somewhere between seven to ten or eleven, depending on what happens within the city. Because we don't go out, like we said before, we don't go out on the highway. We don't go take it out to other places. What we do though, is we operate from within our city limits. Um, a storm could change the whole, you know, uh.
Percent now.
Percentage of it.
But we're looking at, sorry, ten thousand on this three year, thirty-six thousand mile warranty.
Okay, so we're looking at three year, thirty-six thousand mile bumper to bumper warranty. That'll cover everything, including your electronics that you were talking about. Power train is covered for the first five years or sixty thousand miles. This covers all electronic components of the engine and drop train. Emissions system is, uh, pickup truck for two years, twenty-four thousand miles. Uh, heavy duty trucks with the heavy duty truck warranty that stretches over five years, fifty thousand on the emissions control system. This is what the factory warranty is. So no, that's not counting, but an extended warranty will cover up to the hundred thousand miles. So that is something we, so on any of these that we were, we were wanting to purchase. Typically, that's only gonna be for five years. Yeah. So, so we're three year, thirty-six standard bumper to bumper. We're five years, sixty thousand miles on the power train. And we're five years, fifty thousand miles on the emissions controllers. The bumper to bumper is the one that expires at three. Everything else runs to five thousand, or five years. Because we're not going to put that amount of miles on it. I would not expect for five years.
No, we'll still be driving it in two thousand and thirty-five.
Yeah. So, um, uh, you want to amend your motion to allow some money to negotiate for an extended warranty instead of setting another not to exceed?
Then we'll be up to sixty-eight thousand, adding two thousand for extended warranty. I'll raise it to sixty-eight thousand included, so not to exceed that, for everything we're gonna put on the truck.
Okay, so Councilman Sanders amended his not to exceed in his motion to sixty-eight thousand. Do you still say that?
I second that.
Councilman Reasoner still seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval? One, two. We got two, four, all opposed. We got one opposed. I'm sorry. So Councilman Sanders, Councilman Reasoner, approve, oppose, Councilman Ellis, abstentions? Councilman, uh, or I'm getting sleepy here. Hang on. Councilman Davis, uh, abstains. Uh, in this case, I will vote for, go ahead and move forward on this. And so the motion carries through three, two. Yeah, motion carries by three.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I am sixteen, considered and approved voting for Region Fourteen Director of the T L Board of Directors.
Included in your packet, the, pardon me, yeah, attached to the ballot and biographies of the Region Fourteen Directors for the Board of Directors. Uh, officials were nominated to serve a one-year term on the Board of Directors beginning October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five. And we have to submit this by October twenty-third. So I'm gonna put it on the agenda just so they didn't get, um, not done if we want to do it. But they don't get to pick one.
Did we know action on this last year?
We know action, the one for the.
Legal, nine one one.
Nine one one.
Couple months ago.
What all do you mean?
But if y'all wanna know action on this, I wanna vote for no action. I'm not just going to know action this one. I need a motion to second the vote to take no action on it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to do no vote on item number sixteen.
Okay, motion on the floor, Councilman Ellis.
I second it.
To take no action on item sixteen, cast no vote on item sixteen, seconded. Just executive, Councilman Sanders. All in favor of approving?
Approving no action.
Approving the, the motion for no action this. One, two, yes, you now. Okay, no action, item sixteen. Okay, it's coming up, uh, item seventeen, review and approve the agreement between City Road and Forest and Thornbury Development Southern Water Hoops Water Systems and Development, for development in phase two of section four. At this time, council, I would like to adjourn and to close executive session. So let's give, uh, the time is nine thirty-eight. Let's give a few minutes for everyone to vacate. And then we'll go into closed session.